The UPS store.
That's right.
I was looking at her thinking, boy, that woman looks so familiar. And then she turned around and...
I can count.
When did you get back? So the funeral's in another week, you said?
Try that.
Oh, your mom was there.
Can you hear us? Hello?
Yeah. That'll be pretty cool, actually. Military burial, then it was...
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you a little bit.
So they're all over the country.
Huh, I didn't realize that.
James, James will be the thing with the bachelor slides.
That is, actually.
Test, 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 test.
We're gonna drive through it in about three weeks, because we're heading down to see my mother-in-law in Florida. She's...
Yeah.
And then we'll drive kind of...
I can hear talking.
Georgia, Charleston, and then see what else. It's basically marketing stuff.
Bonnie, can you hear us now?
Part of the country, I just don't know at all.
Yes.
Respond. Is she giving any some...
Yes.
Okay.
Well, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Basalt Town Council meeting for July 13th, 2021. We're going to kick off tonight's meeting with a work session with Sam Light from CIRSA, which is a major insurance provider to municipalities in the state. So we're going to learn about our ethics, liability, and best practices for elected officials. So this'll be a pretty scintillating topic, I think, for many people calling in. So, Sam, do you want to come up?
Yeah, I think we'll have him come up.
Best circumstance here. Well, welcome. We're glad to see you. Glad you got through the mudslides and all the challenges to travel that we have these days. So you got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, very much for staff for inviting me up this evening. Wonderful to get out and visit members. It's been an odd eighteen months, seventeen months or whatever it's been, right? And it's so nice to be able to get back on the road and visit members and do trainings, which is one of the things that I do for our members in my role as general counsel for CIRSA. So tonight, we're gonna touch base on what I call seven key commitments for success in public office. I think if we focus energy as elected officials on some of these commitments, then, you know, by and large, the liability risks will take care of themselves. We're there at CIRSA to take care of those kind of bread and butter issues. We handle your claims, your insurance coverages. We're proud to have a town as a member. But when I do my trainings, we don't talk so, unless you'd like to, I'm happy to, you know, talk about the ins and outs of additional insured and subrogation and coverage documents. But we try to back that up and talk at a higher level about commitments for success in public office that we think in turn will help reduce your risk of potential liability for yourselves and the organization as elected officials. As the mayor mentioned, there's a small token of appreciation at your place, is a piece of CIRSA swag, but also some handouts for you that I'll touch on briefly during my presentation. One about use of email by elected officials, and the other one about quasi-judicial proceedings. We'll touch on the quasi-judicial rules of engagement. And finally, I left you all a copy of our most recent edition of the Best Practices Handbook for Elected Officials that we republished in 2019, added some new chapters to that, some new topics. So I hope you find that booklet helpful to you. And then, before I forget, one of the other takeaways is if you go to www.cirsa.org, right on the homepage, across the ribbon at the top, there's a tab that says "Education and Training." If you hit that dropdown menu, there's a page there for elected officials, where we publish articles and webinars, electronic copy of the handbook, there's a couple of videos on there, even perhaps, I hope, humorous videos that put a little bit of a lighthearted touch on some of the serious issues that you confront as elected officials. So I hope those resources are helpful to you. All right, there's a little note that says, "Remember to stay by the mic." And I was admonished last night for being a wanderer, so I'm gonna stay close. I'm gonna hope my pointer works. It just worked on the test run. How are we doing?
That was as far as I could count.
Oh, okay. Can you hit it? This next slide? All right. We'll just do that. Next slide? Okay, so we're just gonna touch on briefly, in the time that we have, the role of being a public official. We'll talk about town structure and liability. Our executive director, Tammy Tenori, talks it in terms, these days, of that kind of humorous... It's an insurance commercial. By the way, we don't have our own insurance commercials, but there's one that's real popular on TV where they talk about the person's getting a tattoo and he's worried about the tattoo artist being just okay, right? And he responds with, "Stay in your lane," right? That really kind of, she uses that to describe how an organization where everyone, if they understand and appreciate and respect their specific allocation of authority, and then they all mutually support each other, that's kind of a stay in your lane concept. But then everyone's going down the road together, right, in a mutually supportive way. We're gonna talk about how that concept relates to your organizational structure and liability. We'll touch base on transparency. Just a couple of thoughts, really more questions for you all about how are meetings going? And do you have what you consider to be appropriate tools and techniques to help you manage meeting dynamics? We'll talk about ethics quickly, and then talk about due process, rules of engagement. In that regard, you remember, right, under the due process clause, no person shall be deprived of property, right, without due process of law? At the local government level, at the end of the day, you know, for land use matters that come in front of you as council, and licensing matters that come in front of you as council, at the end of the day, there's only seven individuals who have the power to make those decisions. And with that power goes the obligation to provide due process, right? So we're gonna talk about what that means in terms of some of the rules of engagement for quasi-judicial matters. Next slide? As I say every time, but my standard disclaimer is just a reminder that though I'm general counsel for CIRSA, this is not an attorney-client communication. If you do have questions about the burning issue of the day, and you need legal advice, right, then Jeff's your person here. You can certainly ask me. I'll give you my thoughts from CIRSA's risk management perspective, but I do have a pretty good radar for spotting what I call the live one, right? Where an elected official or appointed official says to me something like, "So, Sam, what if another member of the city council does this?" And everyone's ears perk up, and, oh, well, that sounds like something going on in the here and now. So your town attorney is the one to give you legal advice on that matter, okay? My first commitment, right, is, it seems obvious, but it's an important thing to check in on all the time. And remember that once you become a government official, you're no longer just a citizen of Basalt. You're now a government official. We don't ask you to give up your personal life, but it is 24/7, right, Mayor?
Yeah.
It's a 10 o'clock phone call, it's a 7:00 AM bump into you, right, at the market, soon to be no longer City Market, or is that closed already?
It's closed.
Okay. Well, you don't bump into it at City Market anymore, but they find you, and they'll find you, right? And in the eyes of your constituents, in the eyes of your citizens, when they interact with you about public business, they are always perceiving you to be public officials. And as they should, your words and your conduct matter. And from a risk perspective, sometimes your words and your conduct can come back to bite you if you don't, right, appreciate the concept that you're a government official 24/7. Hopefully, that never happens to you, but it is true in the eyes of the community, as it should be, right? Government, being a government official, is a very important, very powerful position. They will always perceive you to be acting as such when you're dealing in town matters. Remember also that when you get elected to the town council, you're no longer an outsider to the town government. You're now the ultimate insider. And that has meaning for you, I think, legally, in terms of a fiduciary responsibility, because the town's rules, procedures, laws, ways of doing business, they now stick to you, right? And there's an expectation and legal obligations that you follow the town's ways of doing business. That doesn't mean you can't change things, but you have to go through the proper channels to change that. But it can be destructive to a board if we have members whose attitude is, "The rest of you all do what you want, I'll do what I want, that doesn't stick to me, I don't have to follow that rule." That kind of thing is an outsider perspective, which can create potential liability risks for you. I didn't bring a copy of the handbook up to the podium, but in the handbook, there's an article by our executive director, Tammy Tenori, about just that issue. She calls it the outsider syndrome. It's a thing to keep our antenna up for and to get ahead of if we see it happening among our governing body, okay? Next slide? All right. I think that part of the job description for elected and appointed officials in particular is to delivering that product called good governance or good process. We have to enjoy, in local government, we have to enjoy process, because that is really one of the most important products that we give, right, as local government. What do we do? We provide a forum, just like tonight, for discussion of important community issues. But I do think part of the role of elected officials is delivering good governance. I think both practically and legally, it depends on a couple of things. I think if we commit ourselves to the civics principles that are listed on the left-hand side of the slide, then I think by and large, the corresponding legal risks are gonna take care of themselves, right? So by that, I mean, for example, commit yourselves to openness and transparency, and you're gonna have few, if any, disputes or claims under the open meetings and the open records laws. For example, do we recognize as elected officials, when we use email, wearing our elected official hat, that those emails that we send to people, by and large, are public records, right? And that by and large, anyone who goes to the clerk and asks for a copy of elected officials' emails relating to town business or town finances or legislation are open, right, to disclosure to third parties, right? Commit yourself to fundamental fairness, and you'll have few problems under the due process clause, where someone will say, "Hey, you didn't give me proper notice," right, or something like that, "and you violated my constitutional due process rights." Commit yourselves to being predictable and even-handed, right? I don't see them at anyone's places, and I'm not even sure if we hand them out anymore, but you've got a lot of ordinances, right, and they amount to a large book of ordinances. That's lots and lots of criteria and procedures about how you make decisions as the governing body. And while those rules are in effect, you want to commit to apply them in a predictable and even-handed fashion. The corresponding risk on the flip side of that is, you know, if you have an applicant who feels like, hey, I came in for my license, town council approved it, no problem, but you have another applicant who feels like, hey, I'm in the same situation, but now it looks like the rules are being re-analyzed, or they're imposing a new condition that doesn't seem to have any authority, right, or they're just going off script on what the criteria are, that's fodder for equal protection claims. The fancy word "surchory" essentially means the same thing, but it's a state law claim where someone says, "My accusation is that the board was not applying their rules even-handedly and predictably." In fact, when they made the decision, there was no evidentiary basis for it. There was no rational basis for it. It was simply an arbitrary and capricious decision.
This looks like a wonderful possibility for us, though. We could require, issue a writ of cert before you're permitted to address the town council. Really minimize the traffic. That would be, meetings could be shorter. I never heard that term used outside the US Supreme Court.
Yeah, it's, you know, that's why Jeff and I paid a lot of money for law school, I guess, to get to learn these fancy words, right? It's simply, that's the actual name of the old writ under common law that allowed a judicial judge, a court, to review a decision by a lower judicial tribunal, which would be you for land use matters, licensing matters, as we're gonna talk about later. When you make those decisions, you're basically acting like judges. So surchory is a higher court reviewing your decision as the local tribunal, okay? May not sound like much of a predictor of risk, but I think mutuality of respect is a big predictor of risk, you know, because we get it, not every night's easy, right? You're gonna have some nights where it's a packed house, right, and emotions are very high, and you've got individuals stepping up to this podium, giving you seven, ten different versions of what they think you ought to do. "Council, do this, no, do that," and it's demetrically opposed, and emotions are very high. And that's the time when we're again thinking, huh, this is not a job where I get to make 100% of the people happy 100% of the time, right? But if they go home with a sense, right, of mutual respect, you're in a great place, right? Because some citizens will go home and they'll think to themselves, "Well, you know what? I still disagree with council's decision, the substantive decision they made, but you know what? I feel like I was heard, I feel like it was a fair process, and I feel like I was respected in that process." That's an awesome place to be, right? Setting aside liability risks, that's just an awesome place to be, right, in building trust in yourselves as a governing body and in your organization. Believe me, as the representative of the claims folks at CIRSA, that that's not always true, right? Sometimes a citizen will go home, and we find in some of our claims that there's a kernel of, actually, this view by the citizen, right? They go home and they go, "You know what? I feel like the decision was already made." Or, "I feel like they didn't listen to me, they didn't take my evidence into account, right? The decision was already made before I got there. I don't feel like I was respected." Those are the people that are sometimes mad enough to say, "And I'm gonna do something about it. I'm gonna go see if I have some sort of claim to challenge the decision that was made." So commit yourselves to mutual respect with each other as fellow governing body members, with staff that you interact with, with all citizens and applicants that come in front of you. That'll be a great place to be, irrespective of any corresponding benefits, which I think are huge, right, on your risk profile as well. All right, next slide? Let's talk about this concept. Number two, commit yourself to supporting the town's structure, right? I think it's important that everyone in the organization understand and appreciate what their particular responsibility or authority is within the organization, because everybody does have a job description. Every elected official, every appointed official, staff member, even volunteers have a job description. And it does have a corresponding liability risk to it in this sense. Just a refresher, again, on that question, I hope you don't ask Jeff this question that often, but it's, you know, can I get sued for being a town official? Absolutely, right? But first, the good news, we have good protections in Colorado for you all as elected officials. Here, I'm talking about exposure to like a personal injury-type claim, a tort-type claim under state law. You have a protection under the Colorado Governmental Media Act that says, "The town and by extension, its insurer, CIRSA, right, will defend you and play, will defend you and pay claims, right, against you for acts or omissions as a council member," and that sounds good, "so long as, right, you're acting within the scope of your employment and not acting in a willful and wanton manner." Right, so two interesting phrases there, "scope of employment." You go, "Well, that sounds odd to me as an elected official, because I'm not an employee." For purposes of this, yes, you are. That's just the phrase that's used in the statute. It really means, everybody just needs to understand, what authority do I have, right? So I'm not attempting to exercise authority that I don't have, right? Simple example, who writes tickets into municipal court here in Basalt? Who has the authority, the power?
Police.
Police. Who doesn't? Us, right, us on the governing body. Simple example, right? Business licenses are another example, building permits. You as a governing body or your predecessors, right, or state statute has already said, "These are the responsibilities to various people within the organization," right? And believe me, it's, thank goodness, you know, knock on wood, it's not all that often. But once in a while, I'll even, we'll see claims, you know, from claimants that say, yeah, I get all that. I understand it's the clerk who's delegated the authority to approve or deny my business license, but that's not my allegation. My allegation is there were some elected or appointed officials lurking around behind the scenes, directing the clerk to deny my permit or to revoke my license, right, or to issue me a ticket or to convince staff to do some untoward inspection. So you can see that those are obvious examples, but you can see where the contours of this lie, right? So it's simply the concept of everybody understanding and appreciating their job description. The other fancy phrase there is willful and wanton, right? And I just describe it as this, it's conduct that's intentionally undertaken, that's designed to harm someone's protected rights, and that's undertaken with deliberate indifference for what their rights are. That's a lot of terminology. I can boil it down to an even simpler phrase, I just call it bad stuff. Bad stuff, right? And we all know what bad stuff is, so we're gonna be just fine. But it's an important concept to remember, because if you are found to have engaged in willful and wanton conduct, right, you can lose that protection under the state statute that I mentioned, and you can also lose your insurance coverage. Your insurance coverage says, "We'll insure you, we'll protect you, we'll defend you," right, in your role as elected officials as such. But obviously, there wouldn't be insurance coverage for criminal activity or malicious acts or that kind of thing. The biggest risk factor that I see, again, just laying out things that we all commonsensically know and appreciate, but just to lay out the scenarios that we see once in a while, the biggest risk factor... often, but it's, you know, can I get sued for being a town official? Absolutely, right? But first, the good news, we have good protections in Colorado for you all as elected officials. Here, I'm talking about exposure to like a personal injury-type claim, a tort-type claim under state law. You have a protection under the Colorado Governmental Media Act that says, the town, and by extension, its insurer, Sursa, right, will defend you and play, play, will defend you and pay claims, right, against you for acts or omissions as a council member, right? That sounds good, so long as, right, you're acting within the scope of your employment and not acting in a willful and wanton manner, right? So two interesting phrases there, "scope of employment." You go, well, that sounds odd to me as an elected official, because I'm not an employee. For purposes of this, yes, you are. That's just the phrase that's used in the statute. It really means, everybody just needs to understand, what authority do I have, right? So I'm not attempting to exercise authority that I don't have, right? Simple example, who writes tickets into municipal court here in Basalt? Who has the authority, the power?
Police.
Police. Who doesn't? Us, right? Us on the governing body. Simple example, right? Business licenses are another example, building permits, you as a governing body, or your predecessors, right, or state statute has already said, these are the responsibilities to various people within the organization, right? And believe me, it's, thank goodness, you know, knock on wood, it's not all that often, but once in a while, I'll even, we'll see claims, you know, from claimants that say, yeah, I get all that, I understand it's the clerk who's delegated the authority to approve or deny my business license, but that's not my allegation. My allegation is there were some elected or appointed officials lurking around behind the scenes directing the clerk to deny my permit, or to revoke my license, right, or to issue me a ticket, or to convince staff to do some untoward inspection. So you can see that those are obvious examples, but you can see where the contours of this lie, right? So it's simply the concept of everybody understanding and appreciating their job description. The other fancy phrase there is willful and wanton, right? And I just describe it as this, it's conduct that's intentionally undertaken, that's designed to harm someone's protected rights, and that's undertaken with deliberate indifference for what their rights are. That's a lot of terminology, I can boil it down to an even simpler phrase, I just call it bad stuff. Bad stuff, right? And we all know what bad stuff is, so we're going to be just fine, but it's an important concept to remember, because if you are found to have engaged in willful and wanton conduct, right, you can lose that protection under the state statute that I mentioned, and you can also lose your insurance coverage. Your insurance coverage says, we'll, we'll insure you, we'll protect you, we'll defend you, right, in your role as elected officials as such. But obviously, there wouldn't be insurance coverage for criminal activity, or malicious acts, or that kind of thing. The biggest risk factor that I see, again, just laying out things that we all commonsensically know and appreciate, but just to lay out the scenarios that we see once in a while, the biggest risk factor for elected appointed officials that I see in this area is that if a official misperceives that they have some authority individually, right, as a governmental official, that they don't actually have, and then for some odd reason, they decide, wearing that cloak of governmental authority, they're going to go and do something to somebody that hurts their rights. And you could tell that, you know, that's bad stuff. So as long as we stay far away from that, we're going to be just fine. And in the worst-case scenario, if you're found to have engaged in willful and wanton conduct, and there's an award of punitive damages against you, punitive damages are not insurable in Colorado. So that really is an extreme situation of the, but I want to sort of show you what the potential worst-case liability risk is. But as we know, you're going to stay far away from it, we've got good radar for determining, hey, whoop, 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 we're heading down the wrong path here, let's back up, slow down, make sure we have authority to do what you're doing, and you'll be just fine, okay? Backing up from sort of the extreme liability scenarios, here's just a couple of tips to help support the organizational structure that you have, where you have various delegations of authority and so forth, and also avoid concerns around these issues, right? Understand the job description and stay within it. Recognize and actually use your advantage as elected officials, the delegations of authority that are already made under your charter and your ordinances, right? And you can use that for your own protection and your own benefit, right? Because if some citizen approaches you and says, I want you to do something about that foreman who's a couple of steps down the chain of command in public works, what can you say? Not our job as elected officials. We've already delegated that, right, to Ryan and other supervisors, so it's for them. And you can enjoy the fact that they can take all the risks that supervisors take because they love HR so much, right? That's, and that's a good spot to be for your own protection. Recognize that as elected officials, there are things you do individually, that your role is primarily a group role, meeting together, and each person contributing their voice to the voice of council, and you primarily act as a body by meeting in this room and voting on things that come in front of the town council. And from a liability standpoint, that's a great place to be, because Jeff and I can tell you that there are certain privileges that attach when you debate and discuss and take action in this room. And just even more practically, it's, it's hard for someone to say, well, you know, I'm going to sue you and only you for that action council took last night. That just intuitively seems very odd, right? Right? When you're making decisions as a group, you have greater protection. So you want to think in terms of we and not I, that's important from a liability standpoint. It's also, I think, a cornerstone of success, right? Whatever our own personal preferences are about what the work plan or the agenda ought to be, if I'm adamly in favor of a particular issue, right, I want to think in terms of we, because I want to find fellow members who will come along with me, because at the end of the day, I need three other members, right? Unless two of them rap, and it's a three-two night that night for voting purposes, right, or something like that. But it's about consensus building, so both from a liability standpoint and from success in furthering your own personal views of what the council ought to do, it's, it's a we and not an I. Here's another red flag. Mayor, do you have during the meetings, an opportunity for each council member to sort of provide a report?
Yeah.
Yeah, council comments or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you go around, and you know, someone says, Mayor, I have something to report, since the last meeting, I did this. And if everyone's reaction is, you did what? It may not be a liability risk, third-party liability risk, right? But it probably is, in my estimation, if that's a recurring theme, then I think council owes it to itself and to each other to talk about, what are our expectations and norms around how we represent this body and this organization in between meetings? Because at the end of the day, it can translate to a liability risk once in a while. If you want a war story, well, you say, well, how does that translate? Well, we had a couple, we've had a couple of claims over the years where that same thing happened, and the what was a governing body member going out and representing views, which weren't really the views of the board, and so the claim issue bubbles up and says, well, we'd like to remove that person from this liaison role, or we'd like to fire them from their committee assignments, and the response was, well, I think I have some protected right. Well, you probably don't, but it got pretty ugly. But short of that, I think it's really about supporting each other, because at the end of the day, you want to be supported in doing those things that you think are behalf, on behalf of the board, right? If we ask the mayor to go negotiate with the county, and he does that, you don't want to have a did what, said what kind of issue, so I think it's a dynamic for the council to work on together. Next slide. Recognize that this, I'm just about done with my thoughts about role discipline, but recognize, right, that that commitment to that concept requires that we commit to the understanding that it's not seven councils of one, it is, right, one council of seven members, the we. And sometimes, from a personal perspective, as an individual council, that's going to require, you know, some things that may not be all that satisfying once in a while, like setting aside our particular agenda item, if it turns out there's not support for that. Or, you know, accepting that the council has spoken, even though it may have been a four-three vote, and we were on the short side of that, right? You don't have to be the primary cheerleader of the decision that was reached, and I think you can probably still even, you know, tell your constituents, hey, I didn't vote for that, right? But that's different than, I didn't vote for it, and I'm still going to do something about it to make sure it doesn't happen, right? The borrow a war story had a recent situation where an individual on the short end of a vote, it was a development project, one of the conditions of approval was that the developer had to get an easement from an adjoining property. Well, the person who was on the short end of the vote reached out to the landowner after the vote and said, do me a favor and don't grant that easement. Good idea? Bad idea, right? And what's the risk? Yeah, from our claim, our claim people's minds were racing, that sounds like tortuous interference with prospective business advantage, right? So, so sometimes it just requires we accept the council has spoken. The other thing is it sometimes requires this concept, there may be something going on in town, and everybody's eager to hear the council, right? But particularly if it's quasi-judicial, sometimes it just requires that we have to remain detached and neutral and wait until something's ripe for us as council, right? And if it's something that goes to a subordinate advisory board that makes a recommendation like the planning commission, it's just part of your obligation to say, I'm going to stay detached from that, and I'm going to wait until it's ripe, right? That's just part of the bargain you make, right, when you're the seven that have the power to make the final decision, particularly on due process matters, you have to stay detached and neutral and wait until things are ripe. The other risk factor in this regard is, once in a while, it may come the other direction, where citizens think something, or applicants or some other party thinks something's ripe, and in fact thinks that you're the one person that can give them the answer they want, right? So sometimes if you sense that conversation going on, and you're hearing something of someone, they say, huh, it sounds like, I'm kind of picking up a strange vibe here. I'm thinking, if I give this person, yeah, that seems, you know, say, that seems okay, they're going to go ahead and run with it, right? And then they're later going to say, hey, one of the council members told me it was good. And so protect yourself in that regard, in terms of if you perceive that someone might be relying on what you're saying a little more than they should be, remind them, hey, that's a council decision, talk to our staff, and we'll get that queued up, or whatever it may be. Because sometimes people come back and say, hey, I thought they promised an outcome, or I thought this was okay, that kind of thing, right? Next slide. Last piece on this role stuff is to remember that role discipline, I think, is particularly important in the area of employee relations. The council does have an important role in employee relations with regard to whom. It's direct reports, right, which include the town manager and the town attorney, municipal judge?
One of the council.
Yeah. The ones that you appoint and directly supervise. But otherwise, pursue it to section 3.10 of your charter, right, and other provisions of your charter and ordinances. You've already delegated to the town manager the responsibility for supervision of all other personnel. From a risk perspective, that's a nice place to be, to have those resources, right, to have that form of government, and to say that personnel matters are the responsibility of the administrator. That doesn't mean, right, that there's not accountability if once in a while, something's bubbling up and keeps, you know, you keep hearing about it, but where's your point of accountability with your town manager, right? And I, Ryan, I hope I don't speak out of turn, you know, your charter says that, except for the purposes of informal inquiry, your interactions with administrative personnel are through the manager, and I think you'll probably endorse the concept that, you know, that's not meant to be, preclude you from making an inquiry of a department head, hey, what's the status of that project, or something like that. But it's so important in local government world, particularly with everyone wanting instantaneous communication, right, to be cognizant of the need for coordinating those communications, right? Is there anything you want to add, Ryan?
Yeah, you know, I think the council is, has actually been really quite good about that, just if they have a question of copying me in on those communications, so that I'm aware, and that, you know, we can then disseminate information out to the rest of council, so all of council's getting the appropriate information on a given project, or whatever the inquiry might be.
Yeah, and he's accountable to the voice of council as a whole, and lives by the golden rule of bring all of the elected officials up to the same level of information as concurrently as possible, right? And so organizations that are firing on all cylinders, everyone's committing to those concepts, and they are then protective of you as well, because it's less likely that there'll be a fact pattern that emerges where someone's, oh, I see that this appears to me as a claimant, to be over-involvement by an elected or appointed official on this particular issue, and so I'm going to pursue them individually, right? If not legally, I'm going to make some criticism of what they're, they're doing, right? Okay, next slide. Lastly, just to wrap up this part of the presentation, if you want some reading on a different perspective of this, I put the citation in the bottom right-hand corner. There really is, I don't harp on it that much, this concept, distinction between policymaking and legislation and administrative matters. They're not mutually exclusive, they're not silos where they never interact with each other, but this gentleman, John Carver, calls it policy governance.
This meeting is being recorded.
Where within the structure, there is mutually supportive approaches to how policy gets done, with respect for the fact that certain matters also then gets done through delegations of authority that's already been made. What it means for the governing body then probably is, you get to enjoy, I hope, right, the big picture stuff, right? We're a municipal corporation, you're the part of the organization that's most uniquely qualified and situated to deal with the big picture stuff. Hey, what are our communities' needs and wants, and how do we put governmental resources on it? But the day-to-day operations, staff will take care of that. You have the longest time horizon within the organization. You're thinking master plan, five-year capital investment, where should Basalt be in five, 10, 20 years? It does translate then, for if there's difficulty in this area, we sometimes will show the organization, next slide, this, and say, you know, there's no magic answer to this, but it's a question of self-reflection, within our organization, where do people spend their energy? Where does the governing body spend its energy, right? And in my humble opinion, it's being the policymakers and the visionaries, right? You're spending your energy in the upper one or two items, right? And then the staff, professional staff that you've hired to manage and supervise for you, spending their time, right, on the front-line supervision and the management task. All right, next slide. All right, commitment three, commit to transparency. I just want to briefly, everybody's, we have recognized most of your faces, so I know we've talked about this in the past, but I think we have one new member, but a good refresher for everyone. Let's talk about the open meetings law. Remember that in Colorado, as the governing body of the entity, the town council, as well as all the town's boards and commissions, et cetera, are subject to the open meetings law. Basically says this, whenever three or more members of the town council meet to discuss public business, that's a meeting that has to be open to the public. Simply means a citizen has a right to observe that discussion. Second half of the open meetings law is, if a fourth member will be present, or you're going to take some kind of action, then it has to be preceded by notice of an agenda, and that's it, right? It doesn't apply to chance, social gathering, excuse me, does the, apply to chance gatherings, like where four of you bump into the, each other at the coffee shop, that's not an automatic violation. It doesn't apply to social gatherings, just because you're a busy social gathering, doesn't mean that's an automatic violation. But it does mean that if you have those, social gatherings, or you bump into each other, that cannot become a platform for a discussion of public business unless you're going to meet the openness requirement of the statute, okay? A meeting, two frustrating things about the statute, not so much frustrating, but have caused a lot of questions over the years. The statute says, a meeting includes any gathering to discuss public business in person, like we're doing now, by phone, or electronically, which means email. Does it mean texting? Yeah, I think it means texting, that's, right? Right? So we're going to talk about that more in a second. And it also, the statute doesn't define what is public business, right? Because we, next slide. We always thought, well, it can't mean every single, right, type of email becomes a subject to the openness requirement, right, and so on and so forth. But it does, the statute was amended 25 years ago to expressly say electronically, with the express purpose of saying that if elected officials use email to discuss public business, right, then the open meeting requirements apply. Our Colorado Supreme Court, a number of years ago, jumped into this fray, and they kind of helped us understand what public business meant, right? Because the questions that were bubbling up is like, what if Ryan just sends out an email to the seven of us and says, who's available for a work session next week? And in response, everybody, you know, seven emails coming in from everybody, and they're all copying each other, well, aren't we discussing public business at that point? No, right? Because the Supreme Court a while back said, no, public business, for purposes of the statute, means a discussion of policymaking matters that are in front of the town council, okay? This year, the Colorado Legislature did finally lend its hand to this issue and help provide some clarity, so House Bill 211025, that'll take effect in September, basically says this, that, it still says, if elected officials use email to discuss public business, then that's subject to the openness requirement. But if the email is only for purposes of scheduling and availability, okay, or if it's an email that's simply an FYI email, or you're simply copying your fellow council members on a response back to a constituent, right? Or you're just emailing your fellow council members with a question, all for discussion at a later meeting, then that's not a meeting for purposes of the statute. So those are some safe harbors, but you can see the underlying theme, like if I write, if you write an email to your fellow council members, hey, here's an interesting article about solar technology, we ought to bring this up and think about it for our land use regulations. If everyone jumps into the fray, yeah, we ought to do that, let's amend the ordinance this way, that way, now, now we got a discussion of public business, right? But if we're just posing the question, we bring it up later, we're fine. I think the other part of the statute that isn't discussed that much in the news articles you see about it, I think, is this important piece. It does emphasize, right, it adds language to the statute to emphasize or clarify that any discussion of the merits or substance of a policy matter or other pending proposition, right, in front of the town council, or something that may come in front of the town council, if you're having a discussion of the merits or substance of that issue, then you are, right, triggering the openness requirement of the statute. People have been saying, well, what is, what is merits or substance? It's a good words for lawyers, right? Well, the legislature helped us out, and they said, a discussion of the merits or substance means a discussion of the, of the essence. I love it, essence. What is the essence, right? So those are all words that'll get played out over time, but that's some clarification that I think is helpful to you, okay? I mentioned text messaging, be careful of that. I've had one or two inquiries in our claims world about the accusation, well, I see quasi-judicial decision-makers during the land use hearing, it seems pretty obvious to me that they're using their phones up there, what are they doing up there? It comes out, come to find out that they were texting each other within the public meeting. Good idea? Bad idea? I don't know, if you're just texting the score of the game, that's fine, right? But it turns out that the accusation was, no, they're texting each other about voting, and things that they should be saying during deliberations, right? So text messaging has, I think, its own problems as well. What about social media? Can a discussion on social media trigger the openness requirement? I think same concepts apply, if there's three or more of you are having a discussion with each other via social media about pending policy matters of the council, then the same concepts apply, okay? Next slide. Don't want to spend too much time on social media, but there's a couple of tips there. Just recognize that social media, the law in this area is developed enough that if you have your own social media site, but you use it in doing your job as an elected official, then that site, I think, will be subject to First Amendment principles, and the takeaway there is simply do not censor or delete content based on the viewpoint or the message in the comments. You can turn off the entire comment feature if you want, right? But if you see, if you, hey, we're having a great community event this week, and all of a sudden, the threads blowing up with criticisms of you or the council individually, hey, take solace in the fact that that's going to disappear down into the thread, but you don't want to be in the position of an accusation that says, no, that, you know, their social media site seemed to walk and talk like a governmental site, and they were using it to do their job as a trustee or a council member, and therefore, I think it's subject to First Amendment principles, okay? Other tips there on social media that I'll just leave for you to look at whenever you would like. Next slide. All right, commit to good meetings, we all know all this, but, you know, a couple of We all know all this, but, you know, a couple of things, I, by the way, as we were getting ready, I love the things you've done, right, to help great, lay the groundwork for great meetings in terms of, you know, use and expectancy, right? Do the things that you want to see to help make your meetings efficient and run smoothly, though we are informal in local government, I do think some sense of formality is important, right? And it can cause, you know, you're, you have the right, I think, to control how you want the flow of the meeting to go and how civil you want it to be. You know, you don't want to have the marshal remove someone from a meeting for what they're saying, right? But you can do other things, right, that helps set the tone and the expectations for a well-run meeting. Next slide. These are my questions that I mentioned into my introduction, right? I think it's a wise council that finds the time to talk with each other as a council if you're having problems with meeting dynamics wherever they were come from. You say, well, why does this Sursa guy making this suggestion to us? Because sometimes through our liability hotline, I'll get calls from elected or appointed officials that say, does Sursa have any rules or guidelines or samples that can help us get at this issue? You know, and the issue I have is everyone's talking over each other. Or some people are drowning out the conversation to the point where others feel like they can't speak at all. Or our conversations are becoming unduly partisan. By the way, Colorado local government is avowedly, right, proudly nonpartisan, and so that doesn't need to infect your discussion. But whatever it is, and wherever it's coming from, discussion around good meetings is to protect each and every member of the board. So wherever it's coming from, I think it's a wise council that finds the talk, finds time to talk about, hey, what's, 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 what's really bothering us about how our meetings are going? If they're going great, awesome, but if they're not, get ahead of those issues early. Next slide. All right, let's talk about ethics. I sometimes make the comment that, you know, the code of ethics is your best friend, right? Yeah. You get, you know, sometimes the pushback I get is, well, no, it's, you know, it's a bunch of ethical rules that are potential traps and the slightest misstep, I can be on the receiving end of an ethics complaint. That, that may be true sometimes, and I know sometimes that you may be subject to unreasonable accusations in the area of ethics, but that's where the code becomes your best friend, right? If we have a good working familiarity with our local code of ethics and we honor, right, our ethical obligations and we commit to high principles in ethical conduct, including, you know, avoiding appearances of impropriety where they may crop up, then you're going to be in a great place. So make sure you become familiar with your code of ethics, being a home rural municipality, you do have the authority and you've used it, right, to have your own local code of ethics, and that's, that's a nice place to be, right? Because then you can regulate at a local level around these issues. Your code of ethics, though, does mirror a lot of what's in the state law, but make sure, you know, it's in Chapter Two, Article Eight of your municipal code. Make sure you have a good working familiarity with it, because then when that accusation comes up, I think you have a conflict of interest. You say, well, wait a second, here's what our code actually says, you know, I, I've got to have a financial interest, right, where I'm taking some sort of action that's going to directly and substantively affect my interest, and your accusation is that just because I live in this neighborhood where someone's requesting a minor variance 500 yards from my house, that's a conflict of interest? Well, I disagree, because here's what our code says. So that will help you. All right, let's touch on three things real quickly. Let's talk about conflicts of interest, confidential information and gifts. On conflicts of interest, we all remember what a conflict situation is. By and large, it's this, whenever the council is going to take some kind of action, right, that's going to affect your own personal financial interest, then you're in a conflict situation, right? And what are our obligations? We have to disclose our conflict, right? We do that on the record at the meeting, right? So, but does the, do you, does the council decide liquor licenses? I can't remember if you have a license. Yep. So city council, you sit in judgment of liquor license applications. Let's say we have a new application for a new restaurant downtown and you happen to be the half-owner of that business, right? Simple enough. Mayor, before the discussion starts, mayor calling up the next agenda item, this is a request for a liquor license for 101 Midland Avenue, and you say, mayor, I need to make a disclosure, I have a conflict of interest in this matter, I'm going to recuse myself. So you have to recuse yourself from the discussion and vote. Do you leave the room?
We often have.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a good idea to leave the room. You know, the state law actually doesn't require me, I didn't have time to check for certain, whether your code requires it, but I think even if it's not legally required, kind of from a fiduciary standpoint, maybe the fellow decision makers feel like they have a little more freedom to discuss the issue, right? If the person with the conflict has fully stepped away, right? Now, sometimes the feedback I get is, but wait a second, that's unfair, that's my property interest at stake, I should have the ability to speak on my property interest, right? Well, the, the fourth rail of the ethics rules is recuse, don't vote, don't participate in the discussion and don't attempt to influence, right, your fellow decision makers. So I worry for the person with the conflict, that if they step, you know, off the dais to the back of the room and then someone says on, on council, well, I have a question for the applicant. It's, oh, okay, fair enough. And then the person with the conflict stands up and says, you know, the question is, well, how big is this liquor establishment going to be? Oh, easy enough, that's an objectifiably, you know, objectively verifiable fact, it's 2,500 square feet. Oh, and by the way, it's got wonderful landscaping and plenty of parking and we're going to have wine tastings and it's beautiful and we're going to open next week. What does that sound like? An attempt to influence. And I don't want that individual holding the conflict to be on the receiving end of an accusation that, yes, you did 99% of it perfectly, you recused yourself, you didn't vote, you didn't participate in the discussion from the dais, but my allegation is you attempted to improperly influence the fellow decision makers. So I think in those situations, if you hold the conflict, the best practice is to find a representative to represent your interest for you and do your speaking for you, okay? Confidential information is, is obviously the case. Once in a while, not all the time, but you're going to get confidential information, whether it be a memo from the attorney or work product, from the manager. There's a rule that says do not use confidential information to further your own personal benefit. If we're unclear whether something's confidential, we just start by just asking whether it's coming from the manager or the attorney or some other source. And then finally on gifts, you all get a, get a stipend for being on council?
Just $1,000 a week, it's just.
Yeah. So it, so it ain't the big salary, right? Yeah. It ain't the big salary. It ain't the big salary, it ain't the lavish gifts that bring us to public service, it's love of community. Just recognize your code of ethics has a rule on gifts that echoes state law and it's essentially this, do not accept any gift, right? If it's clear that the gift is being offered to curry your favor as an elected official on some action of the council or to reward you for some action that you've taken. And it's so much just about, how does it look? How does this appear? Does this seem odd? By the way, these are not subjective rules, these are objective rules. It's not, eh, felt good to me, dictate, you know, those two tickets, those two tickets to the Super Bowl didn't seem odd or out of context to me, and, you know, but objectively it was, oh, it was from an applicant who had a land use hearing tomorrow night, that seems pretty weird, right? So you know all that stuff, just be very conservative in areas of gifts. Your code, like all codes, does have the list of exceptions. Campaign contributions, token gifts of appreciation, that kind of thing are not covered. Okay, next slide. All right, let's talk about due process in the time that we have left, just to set the stage here. You all know, right? And I mentioned earlier that, you know, as the legislative and policymaking body, a lot of the work you do is just setting policy or setting general legislation that doesn't apply to anybody in particular at the time you're doing it, right? As an example might be, maybe you're making general changes to your development regulations, right? And you probably have development guidelines, right? That talk about height and architecture and floor area. Sometimes you're amending those rules, but you're just amending them in the abstract, no particular applicant in front of you, you're just making general rules that are going to be applied to individual property owners later on. When you're doing that part of it, you're legislators, right? And you're just making general legislation. But there are other times when you're wearing the hat of a judge, and we call those quasi-judicial matters. We know what those are, right? It's basically land use matters and licensing matters. And we want that power, right? We ought to be unabashedly proud of the fact that local governments should have the right to make decisions at a local level on land use applications and licensing, that we shouldn't have the county, the state, or judges telling us what land development is approved or disapproved within our community or licenses are issued within our community. But with that goes the responsibility when we're making decisions about individuals' protected property rights to basically act like judges. And that's when the due process rules of engagement kick in. Next slide. We kind of know what all those touchstones of a quasi-judicial process are. We know because we're going to, we're going to have notice, we usually give extra notice, right? We publish additional notice, if it's a land use matter, we'll post the property, same thing with liquor licenses, right? So when we have a quasi-judicial matter in front of us, we're going to have a noticed public hearing in front of the town council where council's obligation as judges, just like judges in court, is to reach a decision that's based on the evidentiary record that's developed in front of the judges, you, right, at your hearing, and the decision is based on applying the existing law, which in this context means your existing criteria, right, to the information that you've heard at the public hearing. And the last rail of the due process rules of engagement is the decision has to be made by a fair and impartial decision maker. That's, that's you. That's you. So you really have to walk and talk like judges. Yeah, you don't wear the robe, right? But it's the same concepts apply and, you know, it all has a very familiar source. No person shall be deprived of property without due process of law. I do have a handout on this that explains a little bit more of the underlying foundation of that and then gives you suggestions of do's and don'ts, so make sure you familiarize yourself with what are the additional expectations of us as quasi-judges. We're going to touch on just a few of them here. Next slide. Make sure you limit your involvement to just the council hearing, right? You don't, you shouldn't attend the planning commission meeting, you shouldn't be engaging with the applicant or the proponents and so on outside of the meeting, we'll talk more about that in a minute. Obviously, if you have a conflict of interest, just like any other matter, you have to recuse yourself. Make sure that your decision is based on the existing criteria. Being a quasi-judge requires us to set aside our personal preferences, right? I don't know if you allow marijuana or not, but as an example, you may have been, if, if you are one of those communities that decided whether or not you were going to allow marijuana establishments, well, that's the legislative decision and maybe it was a four-three vote and maybe it was on the three side, but once, if, if the, if the answer was yes, we are going to do that and we're going to set up a quasi-judicial licensing system to approve or deny those licenses, then you cannot go to each and every one of those licensing decisions with the attitude of, I'm going to vote no for each and every license because I just don't like marijuana establishments, right? This is the part of the job where you have to set aside personal preferences. And then finally, the, the due process rules of engagement require that we not engage with parties outside of the hearing. Next slide. Okay, that's a critical, critical function of the, of the quasi-judge. And it's, and I, I get it, it's sometimes also a lonely part of the job, right? Because everybody knows there's a big development application coming up, in fact, we've given extra notice of it. Yeah, good, we did, because that's our due process obligation. But in the eyes of your constituents, they may be thinking, oh, controversial development coming up, I want to reach out and talk to my elected official before the hearing so that I can tell them why they should vote yes or no, right? Under the due process clause, that's impermissible, right? It would be just like if you had a court proceeding, the other, and you were suing someone in a private legal dispute, their expectation is that you're not on the phone with the judge the night before, your trial, saying, hey, judge, how's it looking, right? So you have the same kind of obligation, but at a local level, very important that we stay disengaged from that process, right? The comforting piece of that is remember, you're the seven that get to make the final decision, so that's kind of the grand bargain on ex parte communications. If there's evidence, right, that a proceeding is loaded with all sorts of ex parte contacts and the decision makers were, this applies to the planning commission as well, by the way, were being lobbied and engaging in all sorts of discussion about the application outside the hearing, that's a path to having your decision potentially challenged and potentially overturned. If you want an example of that, if you Google something called White Law, W-H-I-T-E-L-A-W versus Denver, you'll see a recent example of that a couple of years ago involving the Denver City Council, where there were accusations made that a council member, right, was being lobbied by the developers lobbyist and other people on the development side outside of the hearing. And there were emails going back and forth trying to convince that council member why the council member should vote yes on the application. The city of Denver actually successfully defended the case for two reasons. First, you have to show there's actually substantial prejudice and the people who challenged that couldn't show that. But I think one of the main reasons they couldn't show that is because, number one, the council member who was participating in that didn't share those contacts with the rest of council, still was a no-no, but didn't share them, so they couldn't show that other council members were infected by the same ex parte communications. But even more importantly, that council member voted no. What if that council member had voted yes, right? Probably would have been a much riskier claim, right? So, very important, when we advise you, don't engage in ex parte communications, we, we're trying to protect you, I want you to stay in the game, right? I don't want someone to stand up at the beginning of the land use hearing and say, hey, I, I have a concern, mayor, you know, I have some emails here, I've heard that there's some emails of some of the council or board members where they've been talking to the opponents, that kind of thing. So have your talking points ready. Next slide. If somebody bumps up to you on, in the street and says, can I talk to you about the PUD hearing that's coming up next week? You know, a good talking point may, we, well, it's, it's not that I don't want to talk to you, but I can't talk to you now. As, as a council member, I'm, we as council have the obligation to be fair to everyone and make sure everyone has a fair shake, and to do that, we can't talk about this outside of the hearing, so if you can come to the hearing, come. If you can't come to the hearing, you can send comments into the planning director, right? And you will amass all those comments and they'll be part of the packet and then you'll get to hear that person's comments. So this slide just contrasts the differences.
Sam, I've got a logistical matter here, we got a town council meeting firing up in five minutes here, so I, I don't know what.
I've got two slides left, I think, or I'm going to move, as quick as I can. Yep, I'm just going to leave that there. In fact, that just points out the contrast. My last suggestion for you, next slide, is lastly, just during your deliberations, I think one of the most important things that we train on is when you are deliberating on a land use or licensing matter, have your criteria handy and have a deliberation with each other and use what I call Sam's rule of why, right? When you deliberate with each other, you want to stay focused on the criteria and what you're doing when you talk to each other about the application and the criteria, you're making the record that we will use to defend you, right? That articulates why the council, applying the criteria, decided this way with regard to that application. So if someone says, well, I'm going to vote against it because I don't like it, just get a dialogue going, well, why don't you like it? And that's going to elicit the response of, well, I don't like it, you know, maybe there's an errant curveball there, I don't like it because the applicant didn't contribute to the community fund last year. Well, that's not a relevant criteria, but it's too tall. Oh, okay, well, that's what the whole staff report was about, right? So now we're getting focused on the criteria. The last bullet is a slide for more training on this and then my last slide, next slide, please. Right, my last suggestion for you is the commitment to embrace wise leadership. Those are self-evident points there, but the one I want to leave you with is, remember that, you know, we've got 282 members in Sursa and every governing body at some time or the other is going to have some discord, right? But effectively find ways as a council to work through those issues, right? It's a wise council that finds the opportunity to whatever it takes to work out issues because discord ought not to drive your agenda, right? Or how you interact with each other, or how you interact with staff or the community. And then finally, as a takeaway, remember always that as the elected leadership, you set the tone for the whole organization and even some types of claims, particularly civil rights claim, can be influenced a little bit by tone and temperament and approach, particularly that, you know, concern that you're subject to potential retaliation concepts. So if ever your action has this tinge of retaliation, you want to do everything you can to avoid that. I know sometimes that requires a pretty thick skin, right? But commit yourselves to that and you'll stay out of harm's way with regard to that. So, next slide. With that, mayor and council, thanks so much for the opportunity to present. There's another slide with some more resources for you. I know I bumped up against my time limit, but if there's any questions, I'll certainly take those, so.
Thanks, Sam. Very thorough. Questions to council? Got three minutes to eat a sandwich and come back, so.
We do have one question.
Okay.
Are there any special considerations with annexation as it relates to land use? Because there's usually a quasi-judicial part and there's a legislative part with the annexation. Any thoughts or tips there?
Here we go. So, yeah, it's, I, you know, and from one perspective, the, the question of annexation is legislative, right? But we generally know and understand that quite often the idea of annexation is tied up in what's the, what's the project going to be, which is the quasi-judicial piece, you know? you know? And I've been to many, many annexation hearings where people say, "Well, it's not the question of annexation that's the issue." You know, it's the question of what's it going to be after we annex it? And so I think it's hard to divorce the two, and I encourage...
We have the phenomenon of a pre-annexation agreement process, too, which is probably quasi-legal, but it seems to be gaining, gaining in popularity and...
Yeah, and the pre-annexation agreement may be touching on land use issues, right? And there may be an expectation of, "Hey, I'd like to have some input into that," the terms of the pre-annexation agreement that relate to land use.
Yeah.
So, yep, yep. And if my memory serves me, just to end on a fun little fact, I think you've had those issues over the years. In fact, I think I remember sitting in these chambers many, many years ago involving annexations in the Willets Lane area.
Yeah.
And I think the pre-annexation issues way back when were a big issue then, and some issues are perennial. But that was when I was practiced up here in the area and was assistant town attorney for Basalt many, many years ago. So, thank you all very, very much. Appreciate it.
Excellent presentation. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Grab the sandwich and come back. I think it's going to be a, we're eating, working council. Great. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to a slightly delayed start for our Basalt Town Council meeting. It is our town council meeting for July 13, 2021. We had an excellent work session, and we're briefed and brought up to speed on ethics and liability for elected officials, make sure we don't violate our insurance standards. So we've gotten through that, and now we're ready to take on the regular council agenda. So, welcome. Good to see people in the audience. Scott, always nice to see you. So, we will begin our meeting with a roll call. Pam, please.
Absolutely. Thank you. Glenn Drummond.
Here.
Bill Kane.
Here.
Ryan Slag.
Here.
Barry Tenenbaum.
Here.
Elise Hoddle.
Here.
Bill Infante.
Here.
And David Knight.
Here.
The A team is present, sir.
Excellent. Thank you. So the first order of business is a consent agenda, which consists of two items. One is the minutes from June 22nd, and the second is approval of a special event activity permit to close Lewis Lane for a TACO event on July 31st. So, hope everybody get out there Saturday night, TACO is up and going and fantastic. So, so I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda, and I would like to maybe call on Jeff to inform us about a major breakthrough finding on voting procedures. So, you know, the roll call sometimes is a little time-consuming and tedious. Once you tell us what the rule is, we can, we can do a lot of things, right? Voice vote.
Sure. So, for a year-plus, we were operating under our electronic meeting policy, which required a roll call vote for resolutions and ordinances. Now that we've returned to regular meetings under the charter, a roll call vote is only needed for when we're making appropriations or imposing taxes. So, we can use a voice vote for most everything. It's a practical matter. Sometimes if it's difficult to determine who's voting yes or no or something, Pam, as town clerk, has the discretion to do a roll call vote if necessary. But for expediency's sake, we can otherwise just use a voice vote for most everything. And I will, Mr. Mayor, of course, let you know beforehand if we will need to take a roll call vote on anything that would require...
That's great. Otherwise, it's a voice vote. That's... Everybody good with that? Great. Okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda for this evening.
Mayor, I move the town council to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Approved. Thank you. Next portion of our agenda is a call to public for public comment. So, anyone wishing to address the council, this is your opportunity. Just a few ground rules. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Identify yourself by name and address, and do your best to be courteous. So, that's, that's all we ask. So, we are operating on a hybrid environment, so if you're here in person, feel free to address council, or we have a call-in procedure, which Susan will explain to you.
Okay, the first, the easiest way to let us know that you would like to speak is to access our instructions that are the first page. Access from the Agenda Center on our town website, and you hit the Zoom link. If you don't do that, you can call, and the number is up there on your screen, on your television screen, and the number is 1-346-248-7799. And then when prompted, your webinar ID is 93679867749. And everyone that we have on our panelist list right now is for another item, so we don't have any public, other public attendees that would like to comment. But if you do, are having problems, you can text, and that phone number also is up there on the screen. It's 9703791514, and we'll find an appropriate time for you to speak. But right now, Mayor, we don't have anyone that's up there on our screen that isn't for another item.
Okay. And no one in the audience. So, with that, then, I will move on to our next portion of our agenda, which is opportunity for mayor and council reports and comments. So, anybody on council care to address fellow councillors with reports or comments? Elise, I saw you.
I just wanted to let my fellow council members know that I met with CORE this morning, specifically a subcommittee devoted to figuring out how to work in the down-valley environment, which is not covered by the current fee structure of CORE that comes from rent fees. And we talked quite a bit about solar projects and working with the school district, and CORE is going to be sort of creating somewhat of a comprehensive plan for the down-valley area that will include Basalt and Eagle County. So, just wanted to kind of give you guys a heads up about that.
Excellent. Thanks. Any others? I, I would like to provide a couple of reports, and then I'm going to launch into a quick PowerPoint, which will summarize in very short fashion the conclusions from our RAFTA annual retreat, which was kind of a watershed meeting and has some, some conclusions that really do, will impact Basalt, I think, in a very positive way. But just a couple of quick items. One is the swimming pool. Congratulations to staff performing under enormous pressure to try to get the pool open. Had some real drama with pumps, I guess. I'm sure the town manager will brief us on, on all that. But it's wonderful that the pool is open and people are swimming laps, and, you know, it's better late than never on that guy. The next is that I have been invited to help the, our fire chief with interviews for a new assistant fire chief, which will take place on July 21st. So, I'll be probably representing council in that role and sitting in on a review committee to retain a new assistant, assistant chief. The next thing I would say is that it's such a damned interesting time in the valley, and I would request that we get copies of the migration study and make, that was performed for CAST. I just think it has such enormous implications for, for our life here in the valley. And, I mean, just get it emailed or, you know, or odd copies, whatever we'd like. But there's just a lot of really important information about the pressure on housing stock by short-term rentals and what that's spelling for our, our worker bees and staff in the valley. So I think that's something that everybody on this council should be literate about. I think it's a really important, important study. So with that, I would like to just brief you quickly, and I'm going to use just a couple of PowerPoint slides, to tell you what took place at the RAFTA retreat. So, the retreat this year focused on three topic areas. One was post-pandemic recovery. The second was first-and-last-mile strategies, which are ways to get people connected to the trunk line transit system, BRT, and local up-and-down-valley bus system. And the third was on climate action. And so these were really important topics. Highlights, I'm going to get into the first-and-last-mile stuff here in a sec, but the post-pandemic recovery, we now are back to a... in a sec, but the post-pandemic recovery, we now are back to 100% operating capacity at RAFTA, and we are 38% down on ridership. So, that looks like a pretty out of balance kind of arrangement. So, you know, we have all of our drivers back, and the system is up and operating. However, during 4th of July week, we were operating at 100%. So, it feels that RAFTA is going to make a pretty rapid recovery. At 38%, it's going to melt down pretty rapidly, and we're going to get back to pretty normal operating conditions. The, there is a new collective bargaining agreement that is in place with the drivers. That was touch and go for a while, but, you know, in, in times of such critical labor and staffing, it is really important to know that we've come to resolution with the drivers, which are unionized, and they have, it's a collective bargaining agreement, and that was approved by the board and is accepted by the union. So, you know, we have a very stable workforce on the RAFTA side of things, which is important to know. So, the next topic was first and last mile, and let me just introduce the topic because this spells, I think, important stuff for Basalt. First and last mile is the set of transit strategies that you would undertake to make the trunk service line more accessible to people. And the theory in transit is that people don't experience mode changes. So, it's not likely that if somebody scrapes their windshield, fires up their car, once they get in the car, it's very difficult to get them out of the car and to park, and then go through a mode change and do other things. So, the board unanimously passed a measure to make it a priority for RAFTA to participate in first and last mile strategies. And the elements, the major elements of that are bike share program, so recycle. Interesting to note that, you know, we have recycle underway in Aspen and Basalt, yet to be set up in Carbondale and Glenwood Springs. And I was very surprised to see that in terms of number of stations, there are 23 stations in Aspen, and how many you think there are in Basalt? You know, everybody says.
I should know because I approved it.
Yeah, everybody said, oh, maybe 10, or maybe, no, no, 25. We have 25 recycle stations in Basalt. So, we are, and these bikes are getting used. So this is a very neat deal. So the bikes are working. But the big thing for us is the circulator. And so, the circulator is a way to get people moving, so inter-mobility within the town. So, RAFTA is open to partnering and to participating with us in improving mobility in Basalt. So, the previous council, I think, considered at one point chipping in about $60,000 a year to RAFTA to provide free fares between Willets and downtown Basalt. And, you know, that, that has its limits. It's still point-to-point. You know, people have to hoof it out to 82 to get the bus. So, what we've explored, Ryan and I met today with a gentleman named Travis Gleason, who runs the Downtowner system for the city of Aspen. So the Downtowner is a highly flexible nimble system, consists of vehicles ranging from things as small as Chevy Vaults, electric cars that, that on-demand pick folks up. They have a van system, and this thing is really gaining, real, bad pun, gaining traction. Ooh, that's kind of bad, but it, it is, it is really gaining ridership and acceptance. The Downtowner is a third-party contractor, and so what we're exploring with RAFTA is to consider a, a circulator system for Basalt that might be a branded RAFTA service. So, this vehicle would have the RAFTA logo, and for all the world, would look like a RAFTA vehicle, although it's contracted out to a third-party entity. Downtowner is a separate company that provides this service nationwide, and started in South Florida and is now all over the country and doing well. So, the, what we have asked for, and we will receive and will distribute to council the minute we get it, is kind of a proposal for what this might look like. There are really two objectives. One is to provide higher public transportation service to connect Old Town Basalt with Willets. And there's a second objective, which is to get folks connected to BRT and the up and down valley system more efficiently. So, Travis is going to work up sort of an outline, kind of skeletal, kind of proposal, and then, again, we'll get that to council and see what this looks like in terms of budgetary implications. This would be a straight partnering deal with RAFTA, and, you know, it looks like there's really an opportunity for us to move forward. So, James, if you click through the next slide. So, really briefly, the next piece I wanted to brief you on was the, you know, RAFTA has Destination 2040, and we had Kirk Ravensburg present that to us a couple of weeks ago. And of that, there's $1.2 million that has been reserved for the bike share expansion. So, 583K, as you can see, is designated for operations. And so, we've asked, and we'll be getting answers about what, how this is all going to be distributed, what's the equitable share. Ryan, we're chipping in, what, 35 or 40K a year for, for the bike connection now? That will probably grow. So, you just know, if you've read about this, your town staff is watching this, and in my position, sitting on the board, I'm advocating for, you know, more funding and a better role for Basalt. This is, this is coming from COVID relief funds, so that's, that's where the 1.2 million bucks is coming from. Next slide. So, Destination 2040, this was exactly an outline of what the public was told about these connectivity and first and last mile strategies. The cost of the recycle expansion project is weighted heavily towards the purchase of capital equipment, R and M expenses. The difficulty we're going to face in this next round is that Carbondale and Glenwood are not online yet, and so it's going to take a big bite of this funding to get them up and going. So, we're just going to have to see how this rolls out. Keep going. James, thanks. So, this is a little bit of an explanation as to why the recycle share was, recycle program was included in the 2040 background. So, filling the gaps and augmenting recycle, I think I pointed that out, is, is pretty much a Glenwood and Carbondale system. And their big system now, the big emphasis now is going to be on operating circulator systems and recycles. The bikes worked well in July, less well in January. So, you know, we need bigger strategies. So, James, that may be, that may be it. No, these are the issues for, for funding recycle in the future. Limited 2040 funding, Aspen, Basalt, Carbondale, and Glenwood Springs included, no bike share dollars included in D2040 for Newcastle, Snowmass Village, RAFTA, local cost-sharing agreements, defining RAFTA role in managing operating funding. And then, we have outside consultants named Tool Design that's working on, has gone through an extensive questionnaire, and are making recommendations about how to buck up the recycle and use of bicycles to get up and down around the valley. But, you know, 25 stations with Elgabelle and Willets tied in, it's a pretty robust system that we got fired up this summer. So, that's, that kind of concludes my remarks on RAFTA. It was a very good, very good meeting. The last piece was climate action, and, you know, we concluded some really important things about developing a carbon budget for the system-wide for RAFTA and developing a mechanism and process for evaluating carbon emissions and greenhouse gas emissions for all major capital decisions. So, it was a pretty good retreat, and wanted you to know about it. So, that's that.
So, the winter strategy, when the we-share is not available, is something like the Downtowner that you described?
Yeah, the Downtowner is pretty neat. What we talked about is a, is a cellphone. You know, the lingo in transit is platform-based, but it's simply a, this would be a cellphone-operated, the app looks a lot like the Uber app. So if you ever operated Uber or Lyft, you know, you basically log on, you indicate where you are, where you want to go, and they'll come back to you and let you know what time, where to get picked up, you know, the vehicle, driver's name, and, and you get a ride. And so, it'll either be free, or it might be $1, or you might have to have an setup like, like Uber, where you would have a credit card and have an account. So if there's going to be a fare, it would be very, you know, quick and facile kind of transaction to get, get on the system. So, I don't know. This is exciting stuff. It seems like it offers a lot of promise for us, and we're going to be working on it. And, you know, I don't know where, this is an embryo of the idea. We, you know, didn't know anything about this last Thursday, and so we met with the guy today. So I'm just, you know, this is hot off the press here. So, you know, we may want to fire up a council little committee to work on this deal. So, but it's, you know, I think a lot of us ran for office talking about making a better commitment to public transportation in Basalt. So, I don't think there's anybody on this council that has, would have philosophical objections to, you know, improving transit. So, when the time's right, I think we'll maybe consider a subcommittee or some kind of approach to go after this. So, that's it. So RAFTA is alive and well, and doing very well. So, that's my report on RAFTA. Okay? So, that concludes mayor and council comments. Does anybody have any questions or wants to chat about the?
I have one more comment. I also wanted to remind council that the CC4CA, help me, Sarah, climate, what does it stand for?
Colorado Communities for Climate Action.
Thank you. Colorado Communities for Climate Action.
CC4CA.
I don't know why. Yes, exactly right. So, the policy statement will be up for ratification in the next packet, I believe. So I just wanted to just alert everyone so that you could take the time to read through that. We've already reviewed it. I don't think that you will find any objections to it, but part of this process is, you know, to make sure that it suits each individual community before being passed as a whole for the organization. So, take a look.
Thank you. That would conclude mayor and council comments. Manager's report. We've got a lot on this one.
Yeah, we do have a couple of things. But I do have Jeff Kruger from Pickin County on the line, and if you remember, Jeff, he had been involved with us for the broadband project. So we just wanted to update council on where we are with that process. And Jeff, can you hear me? And maybe you can say hello, so I know you're.
I can hear you, Ryan. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Great.
So, the punchline here is that the scope of the project, as we've had HR Green, we've hired out a project engineer that's been helping us collectively through the, through the project. And they have done an investigation with Holy Cross on some of the poles that were going to be used to hang the fiber from, and unfortunately, some of those are inadequate to be able to locate the, the fiber. So we're looking at a full underground build, and of course, that makes things more expensive, so it limits the scope a bit on the project. So, everything that you learned about on the south side, going up to the high school, remains the same, but over here on the downtown portion will change some. And kind of at this point, Jeff, if you want to, do you have access to your map, and maybe we can just throw that up there for the benefit of council? But.
I'd like the mapping map better. Can everyone see that?
So, Jeff, do you want to just walk through that briefly?
Yeah, absolutely. First of all, I want to thank the mayor and the town council for the opportunity to discuss the town of Basalt fiber. This is.
Hey, Jeff, just, Jeff, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we can, it's hard to hear you, so you really need to speak up with the audio that we have in this room, unfortunately.
Okay, yeah. First of all, yeah, I just wanted to thank the mayor and the town council for the opportunity to discuss the Basalt fiber project. So when we, when I came to you, I believe it was both in January and February, we were looking at, at the time, it was really kind of a 10,000-foot elevation design. We didn't have a detail, we didn't have a contractor who was at that point under contract that could actually, you know, fully assess this path. Holy Cross Energy participated in it, but it looked at the time like a viable path for fiber through the core area of the town of Basalt. It followed, basically, Basalt Avenue and Highway 82, came over the underpass, went underneath the roundabout, and then went aerial from there. So the blue line represents aerial fiber on Holy Cross Energy poles. And then we came up over to Cottonwood Drive, then did a path over the Swinging Bridge, and then came across some poles just south of Midland, coming over to Town Hall, going into conduit up through Two Rivers. And then, the plan was also to use some existing conduit that went from Two Rivers over to Homestead, and ended at a pole here. And then we were going to run conduit up to the Basalt substation. As Ryan said, once we won the DOLAG grant, which occurred in early May, we immediately put HR Green under contract. They're a fiber consulting company. They proceeded to come out and actually walk this path, inspect every pole, determined if these poles could actually support fiber. So they categorized them as either requires no modification, requires some modification, or requires replacement. And it turns out that there are 10 poles along this path that require replacement. There are three here, there were four here, two here, and potentially another one over here. And once you start adding up the cost of pole replacement, it became cost prohibitive to do this. So then we started looking at other options as to what could be accomplished that meets the majority of these goals within the same budget. And we looked at doing, and given that we can't go aerial, it has to be underground. So we looked at coming over the pedestrian bridge, across Roanfort. We also looked at a path along Midland. This path would require two bridge crossings. Bridge crossings can tend to be, you know, can add cost because of the specifications required. So, based on all that, we thought rather than do two bridge crossings here, and this pedestrian bridge is, yeah, an older bridge, potential to flooding, we decided let's go along Emma, come up Midland, go to Town Hall, and then proceed along both the Two Rivers project as well as Basalt Park project, and then run up to the substation. Another thing that happened is this conduit right here, which we thought we could use, is not available. This turns out that this conduit is owned by Team. So that was kind of another gotcha, too. So we thought we were going to save money with the ability to use that conduit, and we cannot. And so let me quickly scroll down to what we're thinking. Excuse me. So this, this yellow line here is now the preferred path. So we would again be coming down Basalt, going up Midland, we'd still hit the library, all underground, cross the bridge, take advantage of the work now that's being done at Basalt Park, as well as the Two Rivers project, to run conduit along Midland, and then run conduit along Two Rivers Road, running new conduit up to Homestead. to run conduit along Midland and then run conduit along Two Rivers Road, running new conduit up to Homestead and then going this way, um, along Homestead over to a pole to get up to the Basalt substation. And the thought is, is that after we came up with all the cost for this, so the original Basalt Town Loop, we had budgeted 253K. Um, this new path, although it doesn't support everything that the original one did, it's still, cause, it's, it still supports a good portion of it and it's all underground. And that one, H R Green came back with 255K. Holy Cross is still contributing 60K to this build. It's slightly over cost, but, um, we are in effect saving some money because the library, original, we originally budgeted 33K for the library. Their cost is now down to 18, so there's a 14K savings total overall. So the bottom line is, um, we don't get everything that we originally wanted with Town of Basalt, but we do get a path that can grow and we can build on, and it's all underground. And that in the long term is probably a better solution anyway. So I'm certainly, um, if anybody has any questions.
So, uh, thank you Jeff for that explanation. So, um, coming from staff, we still recommend that we forge ahead on this. It's still, uh, you know, a good deal for us, given that we have grant funds, um, paying for, um, 50% of the project. And, you know, it does drop fiber to the gate, to the sort of front doorstep of Midland Avenue, which was one that we were really focused on, um, that should we, uh, forge ahead on a Midland Avenue streetscape project at some point, we would be able to add conduit, um, at that point, uh, into there. And then, you know, we think that, um, also, you know, the grant funds, you know, we don't think that's a one-time shot, but those will become, um, you know, more, more available, um, you know, if we successfully execute this project and then can have a partner with DOLA and Picken County, Holy Cross, et cetera. So again, more limited scope, um, benefit of it being underground. But, uh, still just wanted to make sure council knew of what those changes looked like before, um, we forged ahead. Because we're at, uh, kind of at that point where it's, um, uh, do or die, uh, that we've got to, um, move ahead as the contract with DOLA has, uh, been approved, um, which was, uh, through, uh, the county, so. Yeah.
Well, the question I have is the, the undergrounding, um, from, undergrounding from basically the roundabout all the way to Town Hall, that's not existing conduit?
No.
So that's, are you gonna, how are we doing that?
Boring it, I believe, is the.
Yeah, there's a, there's a combination of boring and trenching.
Yeah, trenching through the park that'll open up and then.
Yeah, trenching is of course much less expensive, so we do plan to do some trenching along here, some trenching along here. Of course, we plan to bore underneath this, anywhere there's a street crossing, we will be boring, so as not to disturb, um, you know, the, the street and asphalt.
So what, yeah, where we can trench, we will, where it's not paved.
Okay, questions?
This is probably for Jeff. Will there be, uh, points where that fiber could be accessed in the future, maybe for spurs and even, I don't know, micro cells, things like that?
Yes, there, um, we do have these red dots or, or handholds as well as some of the di- diamonds here. So the plan is to put these vaults at strategic spots. This one could certainly serve the, um, Mobile Home Park. Um, there's one here that potentially serve post office. This one is meant to serve, um, the public library. And as you can see, there's, there, these are all strategically placed such that, um, they can be expanded on in the future. And with the, with the idea of also potentially putting small cell at these locations.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions from council?
And south side didn't change.
South side did not change.
Yeah, south side is, is all the same. Going to the high school.
Okay, uh, thank you Jeff, much appreciated.
You're welcome, thank you Ryan.
Yep. And, okay, a couple other quick things. Um, so wanted to just do a, a brief update on Basalt Forward 2030. So, um, staff has been, uh, busy since our meeting last Monday with the capital needs committee. Um, still, uh, working with them on sort of, uh, decision matrix. Um, we got some good feedback from them on sort of a simplification of that, uh, as they, uh, start to formulate their recommendation. But really where the rubber meets the road is us coming back to them with information on, uh, costs and feasibility for projects. Um, and so the, uh, we have those, uh, dates lined out. Um, we've got, uh, Phil Vaughn, um, working, um, and he's actually here. Um, and, uh, and then, um, we've got Wayne, who's out in the a- audience doing, uh, his part as well. So, um, forging ahead, uh, making good progress there. One thing that we wanted to ask of council was to see, um, the, just because we're going to be, um, uh, getting to decision time in August, that between our first and second meeting in August, that we add a special meeting that would focus solely on, uh, presentation update on the projects. We couldn't do it on a Tuesday because we have, uh, um, planning commission on those off Tuesdays. But we're going to propose a Monday, possibly August 16th, um, to see about, uh, meeting for an hour or two, um, to update, uh, council and get some feedback on projects. So, um, we can, we can send that out, but I just wanted to put that on your radar, um, that we might have to ask for a little extra time from, from council on that subject. And just knowing that we're working behind schedule here, mayor, I will, uh, leave it at that for you.
Okay. So, uh, that, since that concludes manager's report.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to presentation. So exciting stuff, uh, the final, uh, facility needs study. So Ryan and Christie.
You can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, mayor. Um, we have tonight, uh, presenting, um, with us, uh, the facility needs study, uh, Wayne, uh, from Cushing Tarrell and Laura Doherty, she's going to be doing the presentation over Zoom. And so they're going to kind of tag team, but I think what I'm going to do is go ahead and give her a call, um, because we'll be able to hear so much better off of this line than off of Zoom. So, um, yeah, we'll start there and then, um, then, um, pretty much that, that now the report's final, um, we're just giving you that final, um, information. It's a hundred-page report, it's a lot of information, but we're condensing that into a 10 to 15-minute conversation tonight to just look at the high levels and just kind of let you guys know where each of these, like, findings are going to go in and what we're going to be looking at doing, um, in the future with that information, so.
Ryan, do you want to put that down a little bit? I feel like you guys are like in the front row at the theater.
Yeah, if it comes down, I would be.
And Wayne, are you coming up? Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Well, Wayne, are you coming up to the table? So we need to borrow another one.
Can you still see out there?
Yeah. Yeah, we don't see the, we can see the.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not going to say it.
Yeah, it was just like, uh, I just reminded myself to make.
There's something just stuck here.
So we'll have to put it up a little bit, but, um, that's good.
Oh, I see.
I think that handle shows up.
Hello?
Tilt it.
It doesn't.
This way? No, no, this way.
Are you there? Hi, can I kill you?
Push it forward a little bit more. Away from you. There you go.
I don't know if that helps that much.
I think it was fine.
The handle is.
I know, exactly.
Now it's even worse.
It's, it's.
It's actually slightly worse.
Yeah.
Cause I can't see.
Can you pull it back?
You can't see it.
He's having a hard time, cause I think she's on the line, but I don't know if she's.
I love technology.
She's speaking, but can't hear.
As long as we can.
That's it.
As much as I can.
Try tilting it down, it's steep.
You know, tilt it all the way back?
All the way back.
Up, that's as far as.
Oh, that's how it goes?
No?
So we.
Here this way, you can see.
Don't we just, don't we just, it says end.
Quick eat your fruit.
Should we try dialing it in?
She's on there.
No, I already had some. I have some.
It was perfect.
When I had it now, you know, we can take this thing off, we should do that.
The handle, please.
Yeah, just when, I mean, I'm impressed.
It doesn't slide up.
Out of the way.
I hear talking.
I thought when Jeff pulled it down, it did.
Didn't when you pull it down, like, we, last week, that handle come down?
Yeah.
These are just microphones.
No, but I mean. I think the handle itself slides up and down.
Laura, we're going to try calling you back.
It's fixed, it's screwed in.
Maybe she could, she's going for the caffeine.
Okay, so then I use, I use the dial, uh, one, seven, ten, twelve, five, nine, eight, nine, two, five, five.
There she is. Hopefully. Hello?
We may just have to run with it.
Yeah, that's us. Why is that sound? Laura, can you hear us?
She can hear us. Nope, we can't hear you.
It's like a website? Maybe it's the motors company, it's the company that makes the motor. B F A N G? And it's, where's the hook on it? Um, you just basically take out the bottom bracket and it's, it's a new one. Christie, do you want me to just run through it? So it's got to be. It, it will be less than, it will be, be less enthraling, but, uh, I can kind of back it up. The whole thing changes. Yeah. Yeah, the cranks and everything. Good luck.
We're going to need a cell phone.
It kicks, I mean, that thing, I, I commute from here to Aspen, Aspen. No, I mean, I got to ride one this weekend, and I was like, wow, these things are pretty sweet. They can dial into the Zoom.
Dial into the Zoom, yeah, that's what Bill Rans would say.
She said, try, try your cell or Zoom. I'm not sure why we can't do it on Zoom.
Now we need a church bar.
Oh, yeah, I can figure it out. Cause I was looking at some that hook on like to the rear, rear wheel. It's the best way. It's, it's the most power you can get. And it's not, doesn't push you from the back.
All right, thanks Wayne. All right. And I think you guys could tag team. So I think what we're going to do, sorry for the technical glitch there, um, best laid plans.
Worked earlier.
Uh, yeah, it did. Um, we're going to go ahead and have, um, Wayne and Laura kind of tag team and she'll just be presenting on Zoom, just like Jeff did, so.
All right, Wayne, welcome, good to see you here.
Yeah, sorry. I'm not as, uh, as proficient in this part of the overall scope as Laura, so bear with me on this. Um, you've seen this presentation before, a larger presentation of, um, do we, do we have the presentation on the screen? Can we pull that up? That might help. Ta-da, okay. So.
Wayne, can you hear me or am I very quiet in the room?
Oh, you're awesome.
Does it work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we game to try it like this?
I say we go with, uh, I go, we go with you.
As I, as my sunlight is setting and I will start to look, uh, creepier and creepier on the screen. But this is really about the, uh, the presentation, so we'll, we'll hit the high points. And really just wanted to do a quick recap of the purpose of this assessment. And really that goal was to provide a capital needs understanding of the town's facilities, really over the next 10 years. And really looking at that scope, it wasn't exhaustive of all of the town's facilities. Um, but it really did cover the, the high point. So it covered the administrative and public facilities, Town Hall that you're sitting in today. It covered the maintenance and public works facilities, public park facilities, some of the ancillary buildings, some of the picnic structures, restrooms, um, that help serve those facilities. It covered a couple of commercial facilities. And then lastly, the 13 town-owned residential units were reviewed, uh, for really appliances and fixtures. So that was really the, the, the basis of the assessment. And so how we did it, uh, again, the overall process, we started in March. We brought the full team of architects and engineers, uh, over two separate, uh, site visits lasting a couple of days each of them to really, uh, go through all of those facilities. Um, we did a thorough visual inspection, so that is different than a destructive, uh, investigation that really gets behind the walls or under roofing. So this really was a visual inspection. Um, but with, uh, the town staff and building occupants, we, we felt that we really got a good understanding of those buildings. We also reviewed existing building documentation, uh, information that, um, basically from original construction documents through some of the records, uh, and information that was kept over the years. And that, that was part of that review as well. We also took, um, what's called a matter port, um, which is a photographic model of, uh, the primary structures and facilities, um, that had a lot of, of key information so that when we were back in the office, uh, reviewing, uh, existing building drawings with photographs in the field and our field notes, we were able to actually revisit those structures, uh, through that matter port and really dig down into what are those light fixtures and what are those light bulbs? So that we had a really good, um, understanding of that. Um, and then from there, um, we got into the facility condition index. Uh, and our, so our methodology was to understand that, facility condition index being the ratio of the cost of deficiencies. So that would be repairs, um, regular and deferred maintenance, and compare that to just the replacement cost of the building. We also identified potential betterments and opportunities to improve accessibility, energy and sustainability goals. Uh, and then lastly, there was a cost estimating piece to this, which also is fairly reflective of that current market volatility. As we did this, uh, we utilized a system of both priorities as well as categories. And so ultimately what we have delivered, uh, to the town for your use in capital needs forecasting, uh, is a bunch of spreadsheets. Um, thank goodness Christie's a fan of them, um, and, and into fairly detailed spreadsheets. And so these are sortable, um, by category as well as priority. And so those are also included within the report. Uh, but essentially that those, um, you know, those needs, uh, that have been identified can be planned for in a capital needs strategy. Another portion of the assessment, uh, related to energy and sustainability, uh, the team did a fairly, uh, somewhere between high level, but also thorough, because the, the town had really excellent information. You guys had a, a big leg up, so we were able to. You guys had a, a big leg up, so we were able to do a fairly deep dive, uh, in evaluating your energy and sustainability. I made some recommendations, uh, relative to that. And again, that was a very specific category, um, as part of the report. So, as those recommendations come to light, um, that those can be sorted and understood as well. So getting to the high point, uh, again, overall, the condition of your facilities is generally good. Uh, it's a reflection of the maintenance over time, um, that the town has put into your facilities. And generally speaking, except for a few, um, a few outliers of buildings that are just well beyond their useful life, um, for the most part, the buildings are good. Now what does that mean? That means it's a facility condition index, which means, overall, uh, that they have not degraded significantly from their original built condition. And so that also includes their intended use and intended function. So for those of you keeping score, um, essentially what that means is you have an accurate reflection of the construction from the nineteen seventies, eighties and nineties, when these facilities were originally built. But again, um, over time, they have been maintained. So that gets us into the next part of the assessment, which is really the space needs. And so the methodology related to space needs was that we did a review of the current spaces. We met with each department and reviewed their, uh, your full-time employee status, um, who, who's working there? How do you work, what are the, the, the needs that you have for the spaces? And, and generally speaking, your offices are, are generally in keeping with industry standards. So we built a program based on industry standards, and then built a program for your current needs. And then projected out for those future staffing needs over the next ten years. And in doing that, uh, we've identified a shortfall of space, that there is a space need across your major, uh, town departments. And, this is not overly surprising. Again, uh, these buildings were generally built several decades ago, when the population of Basalt was half the size of generally where you're at today, and projected to go into the future. And so looking at that, uh, overall, there is a current shortfall of space, of about five thousand square feet, and up to about sixty-five hundred square feet, if we project that out over the next decade. So, getting to the recommendations in the report, uh, again, um, kind of identifying opportunities in the energy and sustainability. Uh, some of the ones that are highlighted in gray, uh, are, are ones that, should you choose to keep these facilities, then there is an opportunity to better those through energy and sustainability, as well as accessibility. Uh, and, um, those are the big ones. Then there's additionally some just plain deficiencies as well that were identified, and so that's all included within the report. And again, back to those spreadsheets, uh, that identifying those, um, you know, budgeting for those items over time, and understanding those funding streams for these kind of general maintenance deficiency, and some potential upgrades, uh, to those, those facilities. But back to the space needs part, uh, really looking at those, uh, in terms of new construction. And a big piece of that is the shortfall of space, the nature of those existing facilities. Uh, looking specifically at the police department, it is in a, um, condo-type building. So adding on to get the square footage, um, that would really, uh, allow your police department to operate as a modern police facility. Adding on in that space, uh, is not an option, so looking there at new construction. And these, just to clarify what's included in this, this is a general budgetary, um, allotment for a total project cost. So that includes new construction, uh, cost estimates, as well as site development, energy and sustainability features to meet, uh, your goals, as well as soft costs that may include things like furniture and equipment to outfit that building, uh, with the additional square footage. Fees and permits, design fees, would all go into that budgetary understanding of a total project cost. So it is not reflective of simply construction costs, but it really does outline that potential total cost expenditure. And, uh, and again, it's that budgetary number, um, it is not reflective of actual projects, uh, because at this point, uh, there's not a ton of information, we know generally how much square footage you need, we have some ideas for site locations for some of these, but others we don't. So, so again, just to get at that, that this is a budgetary number and not reflective of actual projects, uh, and actual conditions. Uh, but it's, but it's a pretty good crack at those next steps of being able to identify, uh, identify that. Um, I think that is, uh, so the big overall, uh, conclusion in this is, um, the buildings are well-maintained, uh, again. So, so kudos to Basalt and your team for, uh, really taking care of the things that you have. Uh, but there is a fairly significant shortfall of available space, uh, given, given kind of when these buildings were built, and what they were built for at that time, versus a modern operation of, uh, of a town hall, and modern operation of a police department, planning and building, uh, and, and maintenance facilities as well. And, those existing building stock, while maintained, are not recommended for repurposing, given the nature of the construction as it was at that time. Uh, some of them are more residential in nature, that, in, you know, the moment you begin to, uh, renovate those, you begin to own all of the issues that are inherent with those type of buildings. So repurposing is not recommended, and new construction is really recommended to serve those current and future needs. Uh, that's what I've got in a nutshell, um, Wayne, did I miss anything?
No, you did a much better job than I ever could've.
That's what I've got, sitting here in the dark, from the east coast, thank you.
So, questions, thoughts from, oh, sorry, Laura, I was just gonna ask council if they had any, uh, thoughts or, um, uh, questions, comments on the study.
Perfect, that's what I was gonna do too, so thanks.
Comments, questions from council? Is there a quick facile way to, uh, highlight the recommendations, uh, again? Uh, I don't wanna draw through the entire presentation, but I, you know, I have a version that's too small to read, and the print version, so.
Um, sure, uh, yeah, we can, oh, look there, she's blowing them up.
There we go, that's, okay.
Ryan, is it legible, or you need it bigger?
Uh, you just had it slightly bigger.
We'll roll it another.
There you go, right there's perfect. So, Laura, you wanna walk through those just briefly?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think we can see them now, so.
Yeah, and so essentially, they're, they're taken from the space needs, the square footage is indicated here. Uh, and with police department and town hall, those are anticipated as new construction. Planning department, this version indicates a renovation of the existing old library. That building itself contains enough square footage in the footprint, so that one is anticipated as a renovation. Uh, however, there is some discussion of that, that site and where it sits there in Lyons Park, um, as to whether or not that's the highest and best use of that facility, uh, sitting where it sits. And then with public works, uh, this one is, uh, there's a little bit of overlap here, understanding that there is a phase one ongoing with the, uh, site out there, um, that's currently underway. And then looking at that phase two construction of the additional warehouses, but also additional office space and consolidating that team over there.
Okay. Got it, thank you.
Um, can I note one thing, Mayor, on that? Um, I just was gonna say that these are cost estimates, it's just throwing a square foot cost, um, based upon current construction cost, but, um, it's not based on any design or any specifics, so these numbers will change.
Yeah. They're nominal sort of takeoffs, I gather, okay? So, questions, council, comments? On that one, okay, Gary?
Um, I have a question more from our staff perspective, it's like, how do we, how do we use this? You know, how are we gonna use this study to really, you know, what, we, we have Basalt twenty thirty, and then we have this. So how are these two gonna mix together, cause obviously, we're not asking for twenty-five million dollars of funding?
That's right, so, you know, part of what we're doing now is getting feedback from the public on projects that are included both in the master plan and in the facilities need study. Um, and, uh, you know, I think that we have, you know, a number of projects that, as you point out, exceeds the amount that we would, uh, ask for in Basalt twenty thirty. And so, um, you know, I think you've gotta start somewhere with them. So I think it's about, um, prioritizing which projects are, you know, meaningful to the community, which projects the council believes, um, we need to, uh, begin to undertake. And, um, as, you know, sort of evidence of our interest in, in pursuing these, we've already started some from the master plan. So, we have done the community pool, for example, and we funded that through a, a mechanism, um, using certificates of participation. Um, we are underway with the public works facility that, um, was cited as a need. We purchased that land, um, using, uh, money from our, our reserves. So, um, you know, I think there, there's different strategies that we're going to need to employ to accomplish all of them. But I think, you know, the, the effort with twenty thirty is, let's focus on the ones that are most important, um, or, you know, most readily, uh, buildable, um, in the, in the near term, so that we start making progress on these.
Okay, well, I just was trying to, I don't wanna confuse the whole thing, and so that, that's the hard part about this, is that it's just big numbers, and it's a lot of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And I just wanna make sure that when we get to the public, that they see, you know, if you, if this is what we're looking for to vote for? We're not gonna do everything here.
That's right, yeah, we, we just wouldn't be able to at this time.
Ryan, could I note one other thing with that too? Um, you know, Ryan's talking about the big picture items, uh, for the space needs assessment, which is exactly the process we're looking at. Um, but on the smaller items, um, the maintenance items, we're looking at putting that into our twenty-twenty-two budget capital improvement plan process, um, and prioritizing those over the next five years, um, as much as possible, given the criteria that they'd already, and the prioritization that they used in the study. So that's how those will directly correlate into our financial information.
Okay, cool. So does that conclude seven A, uh, Mr. Manager? Are we ready to go on to the survey results, or you want more on?
I think we are, um, uh, ready, if you guys are ready to move on.
I, I think so, I mean, that's not the last we're gonna see of this, we'll, uh, have plenty of, many bites of this apple before we move on. So, let's move to seven B, this'll be the Basalt Forward twenty thirty survey results. Bill Ray, are you still with us? Calling Bill Ray.
So Bill, you're on.
I think he needs to unmute. He's on.
Is he on here?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, 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 you're on there. We were worried, I just saw morning, flash flood mornings for Eagle, I was glad you're still there.
Well, looks like we're a little behind schedule, so I'll jump right into this, if it's okay, Mayor. Yep, I think that's good, Bill.
Go ahead, Bill, you got the floor.
Okay, I'm good, I just wanna make sure you can hear me.
Yep.
Bill, just as a reminder, can you make sure you're putting your, your mouth really close to the, to the mic, so we can hear you? Sure, is this good?
Yeah. Perfect.
Great. So, many of you were on, several of you were on council, or remember back in two thousand nine, we sent a community survey out, which was kinda like a newsletter to the community. It gave an update on, uh, what the town was working on, and it asked for feedback in the form of an online survey, or that survey could be filled out and dropped off at town hall. We did the same thing this year for the Basalt Forward twenty thirty, so that we could provide to you as council, and our capital needs committee members and town staff some community input on the Basalt Forward pro, uh, project. So, uh, we mailed about twenty-two hundred of these newsletters out to Basalt households and businesses, uh, last month. Uh, folks could complete it once again online, or return, uh, by mail. We put those surveys, uh, the mail, the ones that were returned to us in physical, uh, returns, uh, using a third-party person, so all identifiers were removed, so this is completely anonymous. Uh, we received two hundred and eleven responses, which I think's really good, uh, considering it's summertime, it was after Memorial Day. Uh, so we had about a ten percent completion rate. On the right hand of the screen, you can see that about, um, twenty-five percent of the responses came from Picken County residents, and seventy-five percent from Eagle County residents. So we have the right balance of, uh, responses vis-à-vis, uh, you know, our, our population demographic of where folks live in town. Um, length of residency, uh, we had about thirty-three percent of our responses from folks who said they've lived in town twenty-one years or longer. And then we had our second biggest chunk from folks who say they've only lived in town zero to five years. So, one thing I would note here, yeah, we'd like to see a little more balance, remember, this is not a statistically accurate survey. This is just a way for us to get some good feedback from the community. Uh, but interestingly, you know, if you add together the eight percent that are sixteen years or longer to the twenty-one, so you know, that's over forty percent of our responses are from long-term residents. When you do, if you do think about possibly referring a question to the ballot in this odd-numbered election year, remember that generally, older voters, longer-term residents, generally are the kind of voters who vote in odd-numbered year, off-year election. So, in a way, this survey does still provide some pretty good insight, vis-à-vis who might be voting, uh, in this November's election. Uh, one of the questions we always ask in these surveys is, do you think Basalt's heading in the right direction or the wrong direction? And I wanna highlight to you that, um, even though we'd like to see that light blue piece of pie, uh, of right direction be over fifty percent, it took a ten-point jump in the last two years. So I'd say that's really positive for the town. The wrong direction slice of pie took a noticeable, almost twenty-point drop. So, you know, I'd say great work by the town to move that needle in the right direction. We, we add, did ask an open-ended question, and this colorful slide, uh, what we do is, we ask folks to share their thoughts about the direction of the town, and we take all the results and we use what's called a, um, a, we, we kinda put a mood analysis to the comments, and it rates comments from, as you can see, you know, kinda angry on the left to happy on the, the right-hand side. And you can see some of the sample comments that I brought out, you know, on the far right, on the far left... right, on the far left, under the angry comment, you know, the town approved way too many new developments, instead of holding to see what happens when they're all completed. So there is, throughout this survey, a lot of concern about the pace of growth, concerns about growth. On the opposite side, on the happy side, we have Basalt forthcoming with issues and works to resolve them in a transparent manner. So really positive response there on the right-hand side. And remember, through the past several years, we've worked very hard on transparency, accountability, engaging the community, and there's a lot of comments throughout this survey from folks that they see that Basalt is doing a better job of transparency and community outreach. I'm sure you all will get these slides, I won't read all these comments, but they're there for you all to read after, after you receive the PDF of these slides. Here's another page for you all to be able to look at at your leisure, on some of these, what I call kind of representative comments. Comments, I read all of them, there were over 300 comments written by the public in this survey, and when I pull out comments for these PowerPoints, I kinda feel that they generally represent the mood of the comments, and are a good starting point for you all to read. So, in the interest of time, I'll jump over these, if that's okay, and keep going with the slides. Awareness, so we, we asked folks, have they seen, read, or heard anything about the Basalt Forward project? And as you can see here, only about, a little less than 40% had heard some, about 15% had heard a lot, and I, I just compare that to the last time we did this survey, where there was a lot of awareness around the Mill Levy issue. So, but we had kind of a 24-point drop in the levels of awareness, but remember, that got a lot more attention in the media, in the community. Throughout the survey, I'm gonna steal a little bit of my own thunder in later slides, folks want more information about this Basalt Forward. They, they're, they constantly continually ask for more information, more details. So if this continues to evolve over July and August, and maybe through the fall, if you refer something to the ballot, it's just, we'll be at a premium to keep the community engaged, and to keep educating the community about the Basalt Forward project and proposal. In the survey, we did present some draft ballot language, so that folks could kinda get acclimated to what could be on the ballot in November, if you choose to forward something to the ballot, so working with the whole team, we created some pretty generic ballot language. But you can see here, I think very positively, you're at over 60% yes on the ballot question. So, very strong. Typically, you wanna be at least 55% yes or higher to say, you know, we have, you know, this thing's really in good shape. At 60%, it, you start to really feel you have a green light with voters to ask a ballot question. So, I think this, you know, even though I cautioned that this is not a statistically representative survey, it's still a really positive sign that this survey hit 60%. It hit 60% even with the high response rate from older voters, who are typically more tax-sensitive, more debt-sensitive, so really positive here. You can see from this chart that this is by residency length. So you can see on the right-hand side, those who live here, who say they've lived here 21 years or longer, you don't have 50% of their votes, but you're pretty close. But you have a lot of positive votes in the younger residents. The key would be to make sure that, you know, it just goes to the ballot, to get those residents who have been here a shorter amount of time, make sure they turn in their ballot. So there, you know, there may be, you know, there will probably be a pretty strong case to have some kind of a campaign if the Basalt Forward 2030 ballot question is referred by council to the ballot. And then you can see here, by county of residency, it's stronger in Eagle County than the Picken County residents, but remember, your Eagle County represents three-quarters of your electorate, so that's a pretty strong number from Eagle County. But still positive majority out of Picken County. Then we asked a question to prioritize kind of values. What, what do you value in capital programs that the town might do? And so you can see here in this chart, that we asked several, adding more parking, energy efficiency and green initiatives, enhancing community spaces, improving walkability, modernizing town buildings, adding public art, reducing traffic, and supporting our workforce. You can see here that the top scores, at, score at 3.96 was that folks wanted to see supporting our workforce as a priority in capital projects, with enhancing community spaces, reducing traffic, and improving walkability, and green initiatives kinda also at that neck-down tier of priorities. At the bottom, at 2.88, yep, yep? Oh, I thought someone was asking a question. At 2.88 and 2.63 is public art and modernizing town buildings. So folks wanna see traffic reduced, they wanna see us support our workforce, they like those green initiatives, and they wanna see more community spaces. Then we gave a list of the potential projects. So you can see here, working from left to right, I'm not gonna read them all, but we go from senior housing all the way to the South Side underpass. And the highest score, you're probably not surprised, is workforce housing and green initiatives, kinda tied at the highest score, with the, kinda the next tier was affordable senior housing, Old Town Parking, Midland Avenue Streetscape, and at the bottom was Town Hall, Willetts Parking, and the Public Works Building. So, you know, Town Hall, Public Works, a little less probably tangible for folks in their day-to-day lives. And on the Willetts Parking, there were a lot of open-ended comments from folks that said, Willetts already has plenty of parking, why are we focusing on Willetts Parking? It's parking in Old Town that we need. Then a lot of people also said, why are we adding parking? We wanna get people out of their cars, why are we putting more parking into the system? This next set of slides shows a question where we asked folks to rank their top three priorities. So just tell us, if you could rank these one, two, and three, what would they be? And so here you can see for folks, workforce housing, far and away, was priority number one. Then Midland Avenue Streetscape, green initiatives, parking in Old Town, and then the rest kinda fall off. This very colorful chart shows you, though, how folks, how they might vote on the ballot, and what their priority is. So, 26% of those who would vote yes on the ballot would prioritize affordable housing number one. Those who are unsure on the ballot actually have a higher priority toward un, un, affordable workforce housing at 3, 33%. But what you can still really see here is, people are just kinda all, they are all over the map in general, though, that these, there's, there was, other than probably affordable workforce housing, there was no clear other favorite, I think, throughout this. You know, the, the community's pretty well-divided amongst these projects. And by county, you can see that Picken County on the right was a little stronger on affordable workforce housing than Eagle County on the left, but remember, that Picken County is only 25% of your electorate, so it's a much smaller group, saying at 32% they would prioritize workforce housing. Residency length, now I promise, this is, I believe, the last of these really colorful charts. Workforce housing, not surprising, is strongest at 41% amongst those who have lived here shorter, maybe those are younger residents, or folks that have just come here for a job and are struggling to find housing, so at about 41%. Whereas the folks who say they've lived here 11 to 15 years, they were 32% on the green initiative. Maybe they're a little more established and wanna see, you know, a little more of the town's investment in green initiatives. And then you can also see throughout here, pretty strong support for Midland Avenue, kinda amongst the six-to-20-year resident audience. Priority number two, so when we asked folks what was their second-most project, once again, affordable workforce housing, but see those bars start to come a little closer, affordable senior housing moves a little closer, green initiatives, so a little more equilibrium. And then on priority number three, actually, green initiatives jumps to the priority, to the most popular, and affordable workforce housing flies over into that second slot. So, you know, when folks kinda really think about prioritizing this, or telling you, affordable workforce housing, probably green initiatives, and then maybe affordable senior housing, and the Midland Avenue Streetscape, if I'd kinda mushed together four priorities that I saw from the data here in this survey. We did ask a question from folks, what's missing? And some folks took a good opportunity here to speak their mind a bit, and I pulled out, I tried to kinda, once again, build a representative sample in these balloons of what folks said they thought was missing. And obvious, and as you know, several of these things can't be done in this ballot question, so once again, this might be a need to communicate with community members what can and can't be done in a ballot question like this. But, starting on the left-hand top corner, a community center, a senior center, a hangout for teens, then many people bringing up shuttle buses, don't forget working with RASTA on reducing traffic, then open space, planting more trees, improving trails, more signage on trails, then sidewalks, a couple of folks wrote in, wrote connectivity between both sides of town, don't forget the pedestrian bridge over the river. Several folks brought up the shooting range, I'm sure you're not surprised by that, fire mitigation, reducing brush, and then completing the River Park project, were common answers to what's missing in this proposal. After we did ask the ballot language, we asked folks if they said no, or they were unsure, what was the main reason that they were unsure? So you can see, or they said no. You can see on the left-hand side with no, it was pretty well-distributed between the town should tighten its belt, we need to do more with less, there's other priorities, and I need more information. But you can see with the folks who said they were unsure about the ballot question, that 74% want more information. They felt that the ballot language was vague, which it was, because we had to provide a general ballot question for folks to review, but they'll want more specifics about the project, they'll want to see that ballot language get fine-tuned. But I think there's a real chance, through good communication and fine-tuning the final ballot language, to bring a lot of those unsure people into the support category, which would only strengthen the town's case for this potential ballot question. At the end, and I'm definitely gonna jump through this real quick, we did do another open-ended, and we got about another 70 to 80 comments in the open-ended about general comments about Basalt Forward, and, you know, the town, you know, just any, any open-ended question that someone, or answer that someone wanted to provide. And you can see here, our kinda dark-red bar jumped up to 43%. So, we'll, I'll provide all those responses to the town to have, that they're your responses to review, I won't go through them all right now, but they'll be worth, you know, kinda taking a read. Lot of folks, I tried on this slide to group things a few together, a lot of concern about, just so you know, the pace of growth, a lot of concern about parking or reducing traffic, that why are we, you know, why are we gonna have more cars, more parking, concerns about the small-town feel of Basalt, and that that's at risk of losing our kinda small-community feel. So I would say that these comments are worth going through at some point. All right, questions? And I can flip back to any slides that council might wanna see.
Great, thanks, Bill. Brian?
I was just gonna say, we'll provide you all with a copy of the, of the presentation, so you can all take a look at it as well.
Great. Comments, questions from council about the survey, survey results, direction? That was very good. I guess question, or maybe question slash observation would be that, without sort of a strong central tendency in this survey, does it kinda take us back to what we learned during the comprehensive planning process in terms of project priorities, and what we heard during the comp plan stage?
Well, the comments were very similar.
Were they, okay.
Yeah.
And I think, Mayor, part of the decision for the council ultimately is gonna be reflected in, like, what's possible under, not only the funding, but then also what fits well with a, with a property tax question, that it be, you know, a capital investment, and not something that, you know, has a reoccurring cost to it year over year. So I think we're, we're able to start whittling down some of those projects that started out as a very big project list, and kinda squeezing them down, and, you know, I think to the, to the point of those that said, I need more information, I think it's important for the public to know that we've already started on a lot of these projects. So doing wildfire mitigation, that's been going on, and have several projects that have occurred around town, I mentioned the pool earlier, and so I think, I think we are, you know, not letting the grass grow under our feet by any means, but, you know, this is just an opportunity to be able to, to look at, you know, put grouping several projects that we can accomplish over the next few years.
Very good. Okay, well, thanks, Bill, that was an excellent presentation, very professionally done, as usual, and thank you for that. If there are no further questions on the survey results, then we are on to item 7C, which is the 2022 budget timeline. Kristy?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the time of the year, right after we finished with our audit, is now we're right on to budget, and so I wanted to provide the draft budget calendar that we've been talking about with our department heads and other staff, for everybody to review, and, and just so that everybody's kinda clear on the, the process this year, and the direction we're looking at heading with budget, just wanted to, to firm that up with, with council. So, so basically, overarching, this is a very similar process to what we did last year. We made a lot of changes in our budget process since 2019, my first year budgeting here, and 2019 and 2020 really represented a lot of different changes, and 2021 started to get to some more normalcy, and now it seems like we've got a budget calendar that seems to work for all of our constituents, including our council, hopefully, and staff. This works well with a lot of different discussion points, and that are fit into this timeline to make sure that... discussion points, and, um, that are fit into this timeline to make sure that there's enough time for people to be able to manage their budgets effectively, and to get those reviewed by Ryan, and, and, um, back to them with, with, uh, good discussion, so, um, so we're pretty comfortable with, um, with headed this, heading the same direction, um, again, this year, um, just wanted to see if you guys had any, any questions or thoughts on that, or any other needs?
Any thoughts, folks, on schedule for budget twenty-twenty-two?
Seems to work.
Yeah. No, we liked last year, seemed like it worked well, so, you know.
All right. Okay.
Great, thank you. So, uh, item eight, we're gonna move on to council actions, uh, item A-Day is resolution number thirty, uh, series of twenty-twenty-one. This is a resolution of the Town Council of Basalt, Colorado approving an MOU with Eagle County for Climate Action Collaboratives, CCAC. MOU for the public stands for Memor- Memorandum of Understanding, and, uh, appointments to the CAC, which is Climate Action Collaborative, so government's full of acronyms and short hands, so, uh, with that, I think, uh, Ryan and Sarah are gonna kinda explain where we are.
Why don't you kick it off with-
Sure.
Sort of the substance of the resolution, and then we can talk about, uh, who might be interested.
Absolutely, um, at the last, uh, council meeting, um, we had, uh, Eagle County Commissioner Matt Share came and presented, uh, regarding the MOU that we're, um, kinda discussing this evening, um, this is regarding a memorandum of understanding to, to greater formalize, um, all the members' roles within the Eagle County Climate Action Collaborative, and that's an organization that the Town of Basalt has been a member of since twenty-seventeen, um, adopting, we adopted the, uh, Eagle County, the Climate Action Plan for Eagle County Communities is what it's called, with the Basalt Addendum in twenty-seventeen, and so this MOU is asking, uh, the Town Council to consider, um, you know, we'd be adopting this by resolution, uh, resolution number thirty included in the packet, um, and you'd be adopting the updates, the twenty-twenty updates, to the Eagle County Climate Action Plan itself. Um, and so with that, the, the collaborative does require, um, uh, an elected official to be part of the Board of Directors. Currently, um, just so you know, they, we do meet quarterly, I, I've been attending these meetings, you know, for the last, uh, couple, few years, um, and, and they're, you know, they're wonderful meetings, um, these be held in person, uh, on the other side of Eagle County, and, you know, so it took a bit to get to, um, during the pandemic, they have been doing, um, these virtually, and they do want to continue with a hybrid option. The meetings are quarterly, and from my understanding, from my conversations with Kim Schleifer, is that the Board of Directors' meetings would be separate from these, um, they're considering these also to be quarterly meetings, but those, nothing has been confirmed as of yet what that looks like, um, also those would be a virtual option.
Okay. Questions of Sarah, or Ryan, or, uh, hopefully that wasn't my phone, um, and then we have a, if, if we are successful, do we do this in two parts, we'll do the resolution, then we appoint, uh, a counselor? Is that planned for this evening, or?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think we need to do a counselor and an alternate.
Okay.
Um, and so I might recommend that we do, uh, cause you, they want the, the prime to be, uh, an elected official.
Yeah, great.
And then, uh, you can have a staff person as the, the alternate, and, um, you know, that seems to work out pretty well, um, if we-
Yeah.
Have a staff member as the alternate, and, um, so, but up to council ultimately.
All right. Uh, questions, comments, before we call a question on the resolution? Uh, hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number thirty, and then we're gonna get on to appointing a counselor to fill this role, so. Love the motion to approve resolution number thirty, series of twenty-twenty-one.
Mayor, I move that the Town Council adopt resolution number thirty, series of twenty-twenty-one as presented.
Second. Uh, moved and seconded, uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, that's a great system, Jeff, I like your, I like your style. So now, part two is, um, let's, let's start with, uh, the easy path here, are there volunteers, is there anyone in council that would like to serve on, uh, this? And I think, yeah, I mean, the logic is, you know, uh, Elise has been serving, doing all of our CC4CA and, uh, climate action liaison, so, uh-
But I don't want to take that away from anybody else that's interested in being a part of that-
Fair enough.
-field, um, or alternatively, I think I'm too entrenched to give up core, but I could alternatively exchange CC4CA with someone, um, or I could try and do all.
And Mayor, you can, uh, just as a clarification, you can have two counselors, you just have two appointments, one has to be a counselor, and the other one can be staff, or can be a counselor, so it's really up to you.
Great. So we have one, is there a second on counsel, or is there, uh, a preference to have a staff person as a second?
You know, I, I personally believe, like, Elise being on core, this and the others, kinda provides a little more consistency between the three.
Yeah.
And then usually, you know, it's better to have a staff as the alternate, because-
Yeah, and Sarah's-
Find another counselor to do it, unless somebody else wants to do it, I'd be-
Sarah, you've been with Elise at, you know, the climate action work, so, uh, it sounds like, uh, it's Elise and Sarah, unless there are, uh, other ideas.
Mayor, I move the Town Council appoint Elise Hoddle and, uh, as the representative, and Sarah Nadalde as the alternate to the Climate Action Collaborative Governing Board.
Okay.
Second.
Do we want that endorsed by council? Uh, do we want a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so then we, it's been moved, is there a second?
There isn't.
Okay, moved and seconded by Counselor Knight, uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay, no nays, so, thank you, and thanks, Elise, for continued service, we appreciate it, it's critically important. Anecdotally, uh, we asked at the RFTA retreat, uh, under the climate action piece, we asked people to write a number on a piece of paper, and the number would signify that climate change is, if you wrote a number one, that would indicate that climate change represented no concern, no action, and is just, you know, not much to worry about, ten was emergency, uh, and should require the same public response as COVID, and so we had quite a few people vote, and we came out to nine point seven.
Wow.
So I think it tells you what the public sentiment about this is now, especially when we have shellfish cooking in their shells on the Pacific coast this summer, it's pretty startling stuff going on out there, so, um, thanks. So the next, uh, piece on our agenda is item eight B, which is resolution number thirty-one, series of twenty-twenty-one, resolution of the Town Council of Basalt, Colorado approving a contract for Basalt River Park. Catherine?
Hi, good to see you all again, I'm Catherine Kristoff. Um, today I'm bringing to you a contract for the work at the Basalt River Park, um, we're bringing forward what will be phase one of the two phases to do the improvements to that river park, excuse me, and this is Mark Drummond, uh, he, uh, is, is the contractor that, um, and he may see some, some familiar-
Here's a striking, striking resemblance to one of our counselors.
I was wondering why Mark you were sitting there.
Um, the phase one of the park installation project, um, includes utility installation, grading hardscape installation, and some temporary erosion control, you can see on the site plan that James brought up, um, this is an overview, and we also have Elise Wolf with Connect One on the line if we have questions, but, um, the site plan that you see before you, um, is actually the full build-out, so this includes, um, both the phase one and the phase two build-out with the full landscaping, um, James, if you don't mind going to the next slide. Um, this, um, details phase one a little bit more clearly, you'll see, um, the colored concrete to the north in different bands, um, for the, this winter's condition, you'll also see some mulch that will be placed between the bands where future landscaping will be installed, um, the misters and water features, um, and some structures will be installed in the future, there'll also be some grading work and shallow utilities, um, some connections to the stormwater piping, and then, James, if you don't mind going to the next phase, this, um, it's just the other side of the park of, behind the proposed development between the river, showing some of the paths that are proposed and will be part of this, um, phase one project. Uh, we put the, um, the plans out to bid on June fourteenth, um, and bids closed last week on July seventh, um, as I mentioned, we were able to get a bid from Mark and his team at Walter's Company, um, their bid came in at eight-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. Um, the town has worked with, um, this team in the past, especially through the Public Works Department, and, um, we've worked successfully with them, um, and feel, feel confident in moving forward with them, should you decide to give us direction to do so. Um, the, the completion, just to add, um, the project, at this point, it sounds like construction would commence in early August, and would need to be wrapped up per the contract by December first, um, but if you have more questions about the timeline, perhaps Mark can answer some of those questions for you. Um, so this draft revolution, resolution would authorize a town manager to move forward with the contract, um, but we're willing to answer any questions you all have tonight and make any amendments to that.
Needs to recuse.
Yeah, I just wanna abstain from voting on this.
Okay. So Jeff, does he have to leave?
Glenn's interest doesn't con, excuse me, doesn't constitute a financial interest under the Code of Ethics, so there's not a requirement that he be, um, uh, not participate, but it's mentioning that, just to avoid any issues of appearance that he's not going to participate.
Didn't you wanna get a snack right about now? I mean, like, there's, there are a couple more of those tortoise back there. So, Gary?
Well, the question I have is, between phase one and phase two, so, you know, we know we're going to phase two, so how do we do that so we don't bid it, so we can bid it as soon as possible to get more bids? Not saying, Mark, this is a great bid, it's, it's awesome, but just so we're prepared to go maybe early spring next year for phase two?
Sure, well, so the way the plans are drawn up is they'll just be mulch in the area, so most of phase two is going to be the landscaping, all the sleeving for, um, for utilities that will be forthcoming will be placed in this phase, so really, the hope is that the mulch can, is relatively inexpensive, um, as, as inexpensive as anything is these days, um, and that can be quickly removed in the spring, and then hopefully the landscaping can, can move in relatively easily. Um, I guess I would add that, given that we will have phase two, hopefully at full design in early winter, we're hopeful that that, we won't be waiting until late spring to go out to bid with phase two, the hope is that we could get that bid process initiated in the midst of winter, so as soon as the weather is appropriate, that work could begin. Does that answer your question?
One of the reasons I'm saying it is, getting landscaping material this year has been a, a really difficult endeavor.
Mm-huh.
And so getting an order in as soon as possible is really key, I mean, you know, I thought we had a good one in February, but, I mean, we're, we're not getting stuff until the fall.
No, that's good feedback, cause we have heard that, that we could potentially order things now, per se, on, on other projects, and that they can get those growing in preparation for full next year, so maybe we need to speak even further about an earlier deadline, so that we can be as ahead of the game as possible with some of that.
We're, we're working with that right now with Two Rivers Road, with the landscaping piece, it's just the landscaping is in.
I know, that's why I was just saying-
Yeah.
If we, if, if we can expedite it as fast as possible, you know, cause I don't wanna have to wait till like, late fall next year to landscape this, if there's a way, I'm looking at Elise, too, is just, to speed this up, so we can get that, all that ordered, you know, in December-
Right.
Would be, would be critical.
Yeah, and part of it, honestly, is just a capacity issue, we just have so much construction going on right now, and our consultants have so much construction going on that, you know, ideally, we'd have time and we could just go immediately out to bid, but it's, it's kind of a staff capacity issue, to be honest with you.
Well, I mean, if, if we think this is a priority, I, I just wanna make sure that we prioritize the right things, because this is one of those where I think the community will not enjoy, you know, a whole summer of no landscaping.
Yeah, I, I have to second that comment, for sure. Uh, could you refresh our memory about the paving material on the walkways, is that a crusher fine path, or what, what do we have for materials there?
Um, yes, I believe, Elise, can you answer that question?
Yeah, so what you're seeing on the screen right now is all, um, crusher fines, and it's a stabilized version, so that any of the, um, water and sanitation trucks can come and drive on that surface. Um, right now, we have proposed, uh, actually stabilized crusher fines on all of the paths, e- even like the smaller ones that go down to the picnic areas next by the river.
Yeah.
Uh, we're seeing what that would come in cost-wise, and it looks like we're, we're well within budget, so we'll probably go ahead and, and move forward with that, which will be more, um, maintenance savvy in the future.
Yeah, uh, just an observation, you know, we have some crusher fine paths in town, and where there's a strong base under it, and it's compacted, works great, but, you know, we have also examples where three to four, maybe even as much as five inches of, of gravel is just basically dumped, and doesn't work so well, you have see people, see people turning their ankles, they're like beat by the time they get to, to the path, cause they're like trudging through, you know, ankle-deep gravel, it, it doesn't work, so I'm sure you guys will come up with a pretty solid spec for, for those paths, and the crusher fines are phenomenal, you know, if you could just, um, you know, look at Central Park, you know, that'd be a great model, yeah, so, uh, any rate, um, that was my question.
I, I just have a question, uh, again, about just the protocols, did I understand correctly, are you guys brothers?
Yeah.
So notwithstanding the reality that there may be no conflict of interest, my experience says it's not the reality, it's the perception, and so I, I would probably suggest, just to remove any negative perception, the article in the Aspen Daily News Tomorrow that reads, Glenn Drummond votes to award brother contract-
I, I just said I was gonna abstain from voting.
Yeah, but you probably wanna recuse yourself, too. Again, it's up to legal counsel, but, you know-
I can tell you, excuse me, what the Code of Ethics says, and it said that, um, you're, this relationship is not one that would constitute a financial interest, you expressed it in the, uh, to avoid any issue of appearance that you would not intend to vote on this matter, um, if instead you wish to just simply follow the procedure when there actually is a conflict of interest under the Code of Ethics, and leave the room, um, that would certainly, uh, be available to you as well.
Is everybody else comfortable with that?
Go, go with your gut.
I am gonna have to recuse myself as well then, because I am an employee of Connect One Design, who is the designer of this park, so.
Okay.
Okay, we can only afford one more.
One other caveat, just for, in, in the Code of Ethics, is that in the event we're unable to achieve a quorum, then those with, uh, potential conflicts, such as those that just recuse themselves, could participate for the purposes of achieving a quorum, so not so fear.
Good, yeah, we're not there.
Okay.
Then the, the other question I had was, um, more about, uh, any kind of binding agreement on cost overruns, um, eight forty-four looks good, what if it's not eight forty-four, what if it's something larger, like what we experienced on the pool? Are you providing any kind of safeguards against significant cost overruns, or do we have any protections against significant cost overruns?
Yeah, I believe in this contract, there's included a performance bond, and Susan was whispering something to me I didn't hear, but, yes.
Oh, I was just gonna say that my understanding is we're just following our procurement policy, so if it's over a certain amount, we have to bring it back to the Town Council, and the pool, we knew the bid was higher when we came to the Town Council, the bid was significantly higher when we came to the Town Council, so it was a little different.
Right, but the basic principle still remains, if you guys get sixty percent in- Right, but the basic principle still remains, if you guys get sixty percent in and you come back to us and say, hey, listen, it's not going to be eight forty-four, it's going to be nine forty-four, a million forty-four, you know, do we have any protections?
Well, the only instance where that occurs should be when there's a change order that we agreed to. If they come across something that was otherwise unknown in the field, they would have to process a, a change order.
Not necessarily.
Oh, yeah.
No, 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 I mean, if there is a change order, yes, absolutely, they would have to come back to us, but that is not the only circumstance that would, that would result in a cost overrun.
But the, like the bid, for example, on materials, that's on him. So if the materials come back more, that's not our problem.
Oh, okay.
Right, that's how the contract's drafted.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how you contract it.
The type of contract is called a guaranteed max price, so that's the way that framework works, is that if there are any, if he can encourage, you know, material costs above and beyond, he's assumed that risk.
Okay, if that's explicit in the contract, yeah, that was my concern. Okay.
Okay, so this resolution will call for a motion for approval, and I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number Thirty-One, Series of Twenty-Twenty-One.
Mayor, I move the town council adopt Resolution Number Thirty-One, Series of Twenty-Twenty-One as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Voice vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any nays? You have it.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Great work.
Thanks, Mark.
So at this point in the evening, we will, I, our next item will require the council to go into executive session, so we're going to need a motion. I think we ought to wait for Elise and Glenn to come back in. So, we, our next order of business is to take up the town manager review, which will require an executive session, and I would entertain a motion to go into executive session, and we'll have to clear the room from all those that don't have an interest. So I think you can see it on your agenda, the motion would call for town council to go into executive session, so...
Mayor, I move that the town council enter executive session to discuss personnel matters in accordance with CRS 2464024F, more specifically, the town manager review.
Do you need to say anything for the record in addition to that?
Once we are in exec session, I will, but not right now.
Okay, so moved, it's seconded, all those in favor signify saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we got to get exec session.
And adjourned our executive session, so we are back in our regular meeting. And our next order of business and last order of business for the evening is resolution number thirty two series of twenty twenty one. A resolution of the town council of Basalt Colorado approving the second amendment to employment agreement with town manager. So so we have a motion and it's been seconded.
You read it.
Before we vote, I think the public should know that our town manager received an excellent review from this town council. And we provided areas of where there are concerns. We provided areas where we think the performance has been superlative. And the public should know that the Basalt Town Council strongly supports its town manager. And really appreciates his service to the community. And so with that, I would ask for all those in favor of resolution number thirty two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays. You slid by. Thanks everybody. That's that's tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, thank you.
Enjoy your bike ride.
Now you can sleep goodnight.
Well, I see. I'm just nervous about getting everything.
The recording has stopped.
Friday late afternoon drive.